Are you searching for the best in online black radio? Then go to blacktalkradionetwork.com, helping you filter through the noise. Real talk, black talk.
I believe I want to thank you very much for joining us today and we will link to your articles from our website uprisingradio.org. Bohoda is a freelance reporter working with the Center for Media and Democracy. For Sonali's Subversive Thought for the Day, George Orwell once said, "Journalism is printing what somebody else does not want printed. Everything else is public relations." You've been listening to Uprising. B. Pasha Shoma is our assistant producer. Leonardo Alanis is our intern. Chris Bennett is our music curator. Teddy Robinson is our engineer. Our website is uprisingradio.org. I'm your host and producer, Sonali Kohatkar. Thanks so much for listening. I'll see you tomorrow at eight.
Context of White Supremacy. Justice Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date is Friday, January 11th, 2012, so I have been told. I got my headset, I'm ecstatic. Plantation is still rolling, still a victim of white supremacy, still quite impotent, but I got my headset, I'm much happier. Hopefully can be productive with my headset. Thank you, listeners, investors, making all this possible. Anywho, moving forward with the broadcast for today, the sound clip that you heard at the very beginning, sorry about that, had to mute my line, some background noise, the sound clip that you heard at the beginning of the broadcast, KPFK, Uprising Radio, they had a segment this week on how white people, different enforcement agencies, monitoring different non-white, or excuse me, monitoring people, they didn't say non-white people, they just said monitoring people in general, their phone calls, internet activities, so on and so forth. They had a pretty lengthy segment about that, which should not be news to anybody who listens to this program, or if you keep up with the news, white people have been talking about this for many, many years now. Anyway, they had the George Orwell quote at the very end of the broadcast, courtesy of Pumpkin, where they quoted Mr. Orwell, "Journalism is reporting on things that people, I would assume the most powerful white people, do not want you to know." Very important. I'm going to try to see if we can get to the audio clips as quick as possible because they are a little longer this week, and I want to make sure that we have ample time to discuss the writings. This is the sixth installment of 1984. We should be done next week. Should be our last segment, and I already have the next book in mind that I would like to continue our book session on, but one more on George Orwell and we'll be all done. So kind of be thinking of major themes of the book, takeaway points, should get some resolution to a lot of things this week and with the final next week. Really quickly, I'm just going back, really important segment from last week, I thought very important segment. This is when Winston is reading from the book. It's supposed to have information about the Brotherhood and the system of injustice that Winston is subject to, giving more details about what's really happening. In the book, it's written, talking about the Proles, who make up eighty-five percent of their society, that they are aware that a change of overlordship means simply that they will be doing the same work as before for new masters who treat them in the same manner as the old ones. The slightly more favored workers, whom we call the Proles, are only intermittently conscious of the war. When it is necessary, they can be prodded into frenzies of fear and hatred, but when left to themselves, they are capable of forgetting for long periods that the war is happening. It is in the ranks of the party and above all of the inner party that the true war enthusiasm is found. World conquest is believed in most firmly by those who know it is impossible. This peculiar linking together of opposites, knowledge with ignorance, cynicism with fanaticism, is one of the chief distinguishing marks of oceanic society. The official ideology abounds with contradictions even when there is no practical reason for them. Thus, the party rejects and vilifies every principle for which the socialist movement originally stood, and it chooses to do this in the name of socialism. It preaches a contempt for working class unexampled for centuries past, and it dresses its members in a uniform which was at one time peculiar to manual workers and was adopted for that reason. It systematically undermines the solidarity of the family, and it calls its leader by a name which is a direct appeal to the sentiment of family loyalty. Even the names of the four ministries by which we are governed exhibit a sort of impudence in their deliberate reversal of the facts. The Ministry of Peace concerns itself with war, the Ministry of Truth with lies, the Ministry of Love with torture, and the Ministry of Plenty with starvation. These contradictions are not accidental, nor do they result from ordinary hypocrisy. They are deliberate exercises in double think. For it is only by reconciling contradictions that power can be retained indefinitely. In no other way could the ancient cycle be broken. If human equality is to be forever averted, if the high, as we have called them, are to keep their places permanently, then the prevailing mental condition must be controlled I will stop there. Again, Dr. Frances Cress Welsing, I believe she has said numerous times, no black person who is subject to the system of white supremacy qualifies for mental health. Quickly, I'm not going to read the entitled article, the entire article, because it is quite lengthy, but I will share a bit more from George Orwell's essay, Notes on Nationalism. I've been reading a little bit from it the past two weeks, not going to read the whole thing because it's a little bit longer, but I will read two paragraphs that I thought stood out for many reasons, you will see why. This is a segment that is titled Transferred Nationalism. He's talking about here color feeling, he goes into various different types, derivatives of so-called nationalism. This is color feeling. "The old-style contemptuous attitude towards natives has been much weakened in England, and various pseudo-scientific theories emphasizing the superiority of the white race have been abandoned. Among the intelligentsia, color feeling only occurs in the transposed form." Sorry about that, start that sentence over. "Among the intelligentsia, color feeling only occurs in the transposed form, that is, as a belief in the innate superiority of the colored races. This is now increasingly common among English intellectuals, probably resulting more often from masochism and sexual frustration than from contact with the Oriental and Negro nationalist movements. Even among those who do not feel strongly on the color question, snobbery and imitation have a powerful influence. Almost any English intellectual would be scandalized by the claim that the white races are superior to the colored, whereas the opposite claim would seem to him unexceptionable, even if he disagreed with it. Nationalistic attachment to the colored races is usually mixed up with the belief that their sex lives are superior, and there is a large underground mythology about the sexual prowess of Negroes." I will stop there, I'm skipping forward a little bit in the article, essay. This is under a different subheading, Negative Nationalism is the subheading, and this is, he's talking about Anglophobia. He writes, "Within the intelligentsia, a derisive and mildly hostile attitudes towards Britain is more or less compulsory, but it is an unfaked emotion in many cases. During the war, it was manifested in the defeatism of the intelligentsia, which persisted long after it had become clear that the Axis powers could not win. Many people were undisguisedly pleased when Singapore fell or when the British were driven out of Greece, and there was a remarkable unwillingness to believe in good news, e.g. L Alameen, or the number of German planes shot down in the Battle of Britain. English left-wing intellectuals did not, of course, actually want the Germans or Japanese to win the war, but many of them could not help getting a certain kick out of seeing their own country humiliated and wanted to feel the final victory would be due to Russia or perhaps America and not to Britain. In foreign politics, many intellectuals follow the principle that any faction backed by Britain must be in the wrong. As a result, enlightened opinion is quite largely a mirror image of conservative policy. Anglophobia is always liable to reversal, hence that fairly common spectacle, the pacifist of one war who is a bellicist in the next." I will stop there, he goes on to give more examples of nationalism and how that plays out. Again, I just, when he says nationalism, I think racism, white supremacy. Very interesting report, you can check this out, it is widely available online, you can just search George Orwell Notes on Nationalism. With that said, we will get to the audio segment from this week. I'll give out the number real quick before we hit the audio, the number to dial is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you have questions. I'll give out the number one more time after the audio clip has concluded. 1984, George Orwell, we will start our sixth study session, this is audio clip number one.
There was a constant come and go of prisoners of every description, drug peddlers, thieves, bandits, black marketeers, drunks, prostitutes. Some of the drunks were so violent that the other prisoners had to combine to suppress them. An enormous wreck of a woman aged about sixty, with great tumbling breasts and thick coils of white hair which had come down in her struggles, was carried in, kicking and shouting by four guards who had hold of her, one at each corner. They wrenched off the boots with which she had been trying to kick them and dumped her down across Winston's lap, almost breaking his thigh bones. The woman hoisted herself upright and followed them out with a yell of "Fucking bastards!" Then noticing that she was sitting on something uneven, she slid off Winston's knees onto the bench. "Beg pardon, dearie," she said, "I wouldn't have sat on you, only the buggers put me there. They don't know how to treat a lady, do they?" She paused, patted her breast, and belched. "Pardon," she said, "I ain't meself quite." She leaned forward and vomited copiously on the floor. "That's better," she said, leaning back with closed eyes. "Never keep it down, that's what I say. Get it up while it's fresh on your stomach like." She revived, turned to have another look at Winston, and seemed immediately to take a fancy to him. She put a vast arm round his shoulder and drew him toward her, breathing beer and vomit into his face. "What's your name, dearie?" she said. "Smith," said Winston. "Smith?" said the woman. "That's funny, my name's Smith too. Why," she added sentimentally, "I might be your mother." She might, thought Winston, be his mother. She was about the right age and physique, and it was probable that people changed somewhat after twenty years in a forced labor camp. No one else had spoken to him. To a surprising extent, the ordinary criminals ignored the party prisoners. "The Pollets," they called them, with a sort of uninterested contempt. The party prisoners seemed terrified of speaking to anybody and above all of speaking to one another. Only once, when two party members, both women, were pressed close together on the bench, he overheard amid the din of voices a few hurriedly whispered words, and in particular a reference to something called Room 101, which he did not understand. It might be two or three hours ago that they had brought him here. The dull pain in his belly never went away, but sometimes it grew better and sometimes worse, and his thoughts expanded or contracted accordingly. When it grew worse, he thought only of the pain itself and of his desire for food; when it grew better, panic took hold of him. There were moments when he foresaw the things that would happen to him with such actuality that his heart galloped and his breath stopped. He felt the smash of truncheons on his elbows and iron-shod boots on his shins. He saw himself grovelling on the floor, screaming for mercy through broken teeth. He hardly thought of Julia, he could not fix his mind on her, he loved her and would not betray her, but that was only a fact, known as he knew the rules of arithmetic. He felt no love for her, and he hardly even wondered what was happening to her. He thought oftener of O'Brien with a flickering hope. O'Brien must know that he had been arrested. The Brotherhood, he had said, never tried to save its members, but there was the razor blade, they would send the razor blade if they could. There would be perhaps five seconds before the guards could rush into the cell, the blade would bite into him with a sort of burning coldness, and even the fingers that held it would be cut to the bone. Everything came back to his sick body, which shrank, trembling from the smallest pain. He was not certain that he would use the razor blade even if he got the chance. It was more natural to exist from moment to moment, accepting another ten minutes' life, even with the certainty that there was torture at the end of it. Sometimes he tried to calculate the number of porcelain bricks in the walls of the cell. It should have been easy, but he always lost count at some point or another. More often he wondered where he was and what time of day it was. At one moment he felt certain that it was broad daylight outside, and at the next equally certain that it was pitch darkness. In this place, he knew instinctively the lights would never be turned out, it was the place with no darkness. He saw now why O'Brien had seemed to recognize the illusion. In the Ministry of Love, there were no windows. His cell might be at the heart of the building or against its outer wall, it might be ten floors below ground or thirty above it. He moved himself mentally from place to place and tried to determine by the feeling of his body whether he was perched high in the air or buried deep underground. There was a sound of marching boots outside, the steel door opened with a clang. A young officer, a trim, black-uniformed figure who seemed to glitter all over with polished leather and whose pale, straight-featured face was like a wax mask, stepped smartly through the doorway. He motioned to the guards outside to bring in the prisoner they were leading. The poet Ampleforth shambled into the cell. The door clanged shut again. Ampleforth made one or two uncertain movements from side to side, as though having some idea that there was another door to go out of, and then began to wander up and down the cell. He had not yet noticed Winston's presence. His troubled eyes were gazing at the wall about a meter above the level of Winston's head. He was shoeless, large, dirty toes were sticking out of the holes in his socks. He was also several days away from a shave, a scrubby beard covered his face to the cheekbones, giving him an air of ruffianism that went oddly with his large, weak frame and nervous movements. Winston roused himself a little from his lethargy. He must speak to Ampleforth and risk the yell from the telescreen. It was even conceivable that Ampleforth was the bearer of the razor blade. "Ampleforth," he said. There was no yell from the telescreen. Ampleforth paused, mildly startled. His eyes focused themselves slowly on Winston. "Ah, Smith," he said. "You too? What are you in for?" "To tell you the truth," he sat down awkwardly on the bench opposite Winston. "There is only one offense, is there not?" he said. "And you have committed it?" "Apparently I have." He put a hand to his forehead and pressed his temples for a moment, as though trying to remember something. "These things happen," he began vaguely. "I have been able to recall one instance, a possible instance. It was an indiscretion, undoubtedly. We were producing a definitive edition of the poems of Kipling. I allowed the word 'God' to remain at the end of a line, I could not help it," he added almost indignantly, raising his face to look at Winston. "It was impossible to change the line. The rhyme was rod. Do you realize that there are only twelve rhymes to rod in the entire language? For days I had racked my brains, there was no other rhyme." The expression on his face changed. The annoyance passed out of it, and for a moment he looked almost pleased. A sort of intellectual warmth, the joy of the pedant who has found out some useless fact shown through the dirt and scrubby hair. "Has it ever occurred to you," he said, "that the whole history of English poetry has been determined by the fact that the English language lacks rhymes?" No, that particular thought had never occurred to Winston. Nor in the circumstances did it strike him as very important or interesting. "Do you know what time of day it is?" he said. Ampleforth looked startled again. "I'd hardly thought about it. They arrested me, it could be two days ago, perhaps three." His eyes flitted round the walls as though he half expected to find a window somewhere. "There is no difference between night and day in this place, I do not see how one can calculate the time." They talked desultorily for some minutes, then without apparent reason, a yell from the telescreen bade them be silent. Winston sat quietly, his hands crossed. Ampleforth, too large to sit in comfort on the narrow bench, fidgeted from side to side, clasping his lank hands first round one knee, then round the other. The telescreen barked at him to keep still. Time passed, twenty minutes, an hour, it was difficult to judge. Once more there was a sound of boots outside, Winston's entrails contracted. Soon, very soon, perhaps in five minutes, perhaps now, the tramp of boots would mean that his own turn had come. The door opened. The cold-faced young officer stepped into the cell, with a brief movement of the hand he indicated Ampleforth. "Room 101," he said. Ampleforth marched clumsily out between the guards, his face vaguely perturbed but uncomprehending. What seemed like a long time passed. The pain in Winston's belly had revived, his mind sagged round and round on the same track like a ball falling again and again into the same series of slots. He had only six thoughts, the pain in his belly, the piece of bread, the blood and the screaming, O'Brien, Julia, the razor blade. There was another spasm in his entrails, the heavy boots were approaching. As the door opened, the wave of air that it created brought in a powerful smell of cold sweat. Parsons walked into the cell. He was wearing khaki shorts and a sport shirt. This time Winston was startled into self-forgetfulness. "You here?" he said. Parsons gave Winston a glance in which there was neither interest or surprise but only misery. He began walking jerkily, up and down, evidently unable to keep still. Each time he straightened his pudgy knees, it was apparent that they were trembling. His eyes had a wide-open staring look, as though he could not prevent himself from gazing at something in the middle distance. "What are you in for?" said Winston. "Thought crime," said Parsons, almost blubbering. The tone of his voice implied at once a complete admission of his guilt and a sort of incredulous horror that such a word could be implied to himself. He paused opposite Winston and began eagerly appealing to him. "You don't think they'll shoot me, do you, old chap? They don't shoot you if you haven't actually done anything, only thoughts, which you can't help. I know that they give you a fair hearing, oh, I trust them for that. They'll know my record, won't they? You know what kind of chap I was, not a bad chap in my way, not brainy of course, but keen. I tried to do my best for the party, didn't I? I'll get off with five years, don't you think? Or even ten years? A chap like me could make himself pretty useful in a labor camp. They wouldn't shoot me for going off the rails just once." "Are you guilty?" said Winston. "Of course I'm guilty!" cried Parsons with a servile glance at the telescreen. "You don't think the party would arrest an innocent man, do you?" His frog-like face grew calmer, and even took on a slightly sanctimonious expression. "Thought crime is a dreadful thing, old man," he said sententiously. "It's insidious. It can get hold of you without you even knowing it. You know how it got hold of me? In my sleep! Yes, that's a fact. There I was, working away, trying to do my bit, never knew I had any bad stuff in my mind at all. And then I started talking in my sleep. Do you know what they heard me saying?" He sank his voice, like someone who is obliged for medical reasons to utter an obscenity. "Down with Big Brother." "Yes, I said that. Said it over and over again, it seems. Between you and me, old man, I'm glad they got me before it went any further. Do you know what I'm going to say to them when I go up before the tribunal? Thank you, I'm going to say thank you for saving me before it was too late." "Who denounced you?" said Winston. "It was my little daughter," said Parsons with a sort of doleful pride. "She listened at the keyhole, heard what I was saying, and nipped off to the patrols the very next day. Pretty smart for a nipper of seven, huh? I don't bear her any grudge for it, in fact, I'm proud of her. It shows I brought her up in the right spirit, anyway." He made a few more jerky movements up and down, several times casting a longing glance at the lavatory pan. Then he suddenly ripped down his shorts. "Excuse me, old man," he said, "I can't help it, it's the waiting." He plumped his large posterior's onto the lavatory pan. Winston covered his face with his hands. "Smith!" yelled the voice from the telescreen. "Six oh seven nine, Smith W, uncover your face, no face is covered in the cells." Winston uncovered his face. Parsons used the lavatory loudly and abundantly. It then turned out that the plug was defective and the cells stank abominably for hours Parsons was removed. More prisoners came and went mysteriously. One, a woman, was consigned to Room 101, and Winston notice seemed to shrivel and turn a different color when she heard the words. A time came when, if it had been morning when he was brought here, it would be afternoon, or if it had been afternoon, then it would be midnight. There were six prisoners in the cell, men and women, all sat very still. Opposite Winston, there sat a man with a chinless, toothy face exactly like that of some large, harmless rodent. His fat, mottled cheeks were so pouched at the bottom that it was difficult not to believe that he had little stores of food tucked away there. His pale, gray eyes flitted timorously from face to face and turned quickly away again when he caught anyone's eye. The door opened and another prisoner was brought in, whose appearance sent a momentary chill through Winston. He was a commonplace, mean-looking man who might have been an engineer or technician of some kind. But what was startling was the emaciation of his face. It was like a skull. Because of its thinness, the mouth and eyes looked disproportionately large, and the eyes seemed filled with a murderous, unappeasable hatred of somebody or something. The man sat down on the bench at a little distance from Winston. Winston did not look at him again, but the tormented, skull-like face was as vivid in his mind as though it had been straight in front of his eyes. Suddenly he realized what was the matter, the man was dying of starvation. The same thought seemed to occur almost simultaneously to everyone in the cell. There was a very faint stirring all the way round the bench. The eyes of the chinless man kept flitting toward the skull-faced man, then turning guiltily away, then being dragged back by an irresistible attraction. Presently he began to fidget on his seat. At last he stood up, waddled clumsily across the cell, dug down into the pocket of his overalls, and with an abashed air held out a grimy piece of bread to the skull-faced man. There was a furious, deafening roar from the telescreen. The chinless man jumped in his tracks. The skull-faced man had quickly thrust his hands behind his back as though demonstrating to all the world that he refused the gift. "Bomstead!" roared the voice. "Twenty-seven thirteen, Bomstead J, let fall that piece of bread." The chinless man dropped the piece of bread on the floor. "Remain standing where you are," said the voice, "face the door, make no movement." The chinless man obeyed. His large, pouchy cheeks were quivering uncontrollably. The door clanged open. As the young officer entered and stepped aside, there emerged from behind him a short, stumpy guard with enormous arms and shoulders. He took his stand opposite the chinless man, and then at a signal from the officer, let free a frightful blow, with all the weight of his body behind it full in the chinless man's mouth. The force of it seemed almost to knock him clear of the floor. His body was flung across the cell and fetched up against the base of the lavatory seat. For a moment he lay as though stunned, with dark blood oozing from his mouth and nose, a very faint whimpering or squeaking which seemed unconscious came out of him. Then he rolled over and raised himself unsteadily on hands and knees. Amid a stream of blood and saliva, the two halves of a dental plate fell out of his mouth. The prisoners sat very still, their hands crossed on their knees. The chinless man climbed back into his place. Down one side of his face the flesh was darkening, his mouth had swollen into a shapeless, cherry-colored mass with a black hole in the middle of it. From time to time a little blood dripped onto the breast of his overalls, his gray eyes still flitted from face to face, more guiltily than ever, as though he were trying to discover how much the others despised him for his humiliation. The door opened. With a small gesture, the officer indicated the skull-faced man. "Room 101," he said. There was a gasp and a flurry at Winston's side. The man had actually flung himself on his knees on the floor with his hands clasped together. "Comrade, officer!" he cried. "You don't have to take me to that place. Haven't I told you everything already? What else is it you want to know? There's nothing I wouldn't confess, nothing. Just tell me what it is and I'll confess it, straight off. Write it down and I'll sign it, anything, not Room 101." "Room 101," said the officer. The man's face, already very pale, turned a color Winston would not have believed possible. It was definitely, unmistakably, a shade of green. "Do anything to me!" he yelled. "You've been starving me for weeks, finish it off and let me die. Shoot me, hang me, sentence me to twenty-five years. Is there somebody else you want me to give away? Just say who it is and I'll tell you anything you want. I don't care who it is or what you do to them, I've got a wife and three children, the biggest of them isn't six years old. You can take the whole lot of them and cut their throats in front of my eyes and I'll stand by and watch it. But not Room 101." "Room 101," said the officer. The man looked frantically round at the other prisoners, as though with some idea that he could put another victim in his own place. His eyes settled on the smashed face of the chinless man, he flung out a lean arm. "That's the one you ought to be taking, not me!" he shouted. "You didn't hear what he was saying after they bashed his face. Give me a chance and I'll tell you every word of it. He's the one that's against the party, not me." The guards stepped forward, the man's voice rose to a shriek. "You didn't hear him!" he repeated. "Something went wrong with the telescreen, he's the one you want, take him, not me." Take him, not me." The two sturdy guards had stooped to take him by the arms. But just at this moment he flung himself across the floor of the cell and grabbed one of the iron legs that supported the bench. He had set up a wordless howling like an animal. The guards took hold of him to wrench him loose, but he clung on with astonishing strength. For perhaps twenty seconds they were hauling at him. The prisoners sat quiet, their hands crossed on their knees looking straight in front of them. The howling stopped. The man had no breath left for anything except hanging on. Then there was a different kind of cry. A kick from the guard's boot had broken the fingers on one of his hands. They dragged him to his feet. "Room 101," said the officer. The man was led out, walking unsteadily with head sunken, nursing his crushed hand, all the fight gone out of him. A long time passed. If it had been midnight when the skull-faced man was taken away it was morning. If morning it was afternoon. Winston was alone, and had been alone for hours. The pain of sitting on the narrow bench was such that often he got up and walked about unreproved by the telescreen. The piece of bread still lay where the chinless man had dropped it. At the beginning it needed a hard effort not to look at it, but presently hunger gave way to thirst. His mouth was sticky and evil tasting. The humming sound and the unvarying white light induced a sort of faintness, an empty feeling inside his head. He would get up because the ache in his bones was no longer bearable, and then would sit down again almost at once because he was too dizzy to make sure of staying on his feet. Whenever his physical sensations were a little under control the terror returned. Sometimes with a fading hope he thought of O'Brien and the razor blade. It was thinkable that the razor blade might arrive concealed in his food, if he were ever fed. More dimly he thought of Julia. Somewhere or other she was suffering, perhaps far worse than he. She might be screaming with pain at this moment. He thought, "If I could save Julia by doubling my own pain, would I do it? Yes, I would." But that was merely an intellectual decision, taken because he knew that he ought to take it. He did not feel it. In this place you could not feel anything except pain and the foreknowledge of pain. Besides, was it possible, when you were actually suffering it, to wish for any reason whatever that your own pain should increase? But that question was not answerable yet. The boots were approaching again. The door opened. O'Brien came in. Winston started to his feet. The shock of the sight had driven all caution out of him. For the first time in many years he forgot the presence of the telescreen. "They've got you too!" he cried. "They got me a long time ago," said O'Brien with a mild, almost regretful irony. He stepped aside. From behind him there emerged a broad-chested guard with a long, black truncheon in his hand. "You knew this, Winston," said O'Brien. "Don't deceive yourself. You did know it. You have always known it." Yes, he saw now. He had always known it. But there was no time to think of that. All he had eyes for was the truncheon in the guard's hand. It might fall anywhere, on the crown, on the tip of the ear, on the upper arm, on the elbow. The elbow! He had slumped to his knees, almost paralyzed, clasping the stricken elbow with his other hand. Everything had exploded into yellow light. Inconceivable, inconceivable, that one blow could cause such pain. The light cleared and he could see the other two looking down at him, the guard was laughing at his contortions. One question at any rate was answered. Never for any reason on earth should you wish for an increase of pain. Of pain you could wish only one thing, that it should stop. Nothing in the world was so bad as physical pain. In the face of pain there are no heroes, no heroes, he thought over and over, as he writhed on the floor clutching uselessly at his disabled left arm. Chapter Two He was lying on something that felt like a camp bed, except that it was higher off the ground and that he was fixed down in some way so that he could not move. Light, that seemed stronger than usual, was falling on his face. O'Brien was standing at his side looking down at him intently. At the other side of him stood a man in a white coat holding a hypodermic syringe. Even after his eyes were open he took in his surroundings only gradually. He had the impression of swimming up into this room, from some quite different world, a sort of underwater world, far beneath it. How long he had been down there he did not know. Since the moment when they arrested him he had not seen darkness or daylight. Besides, his memories were not continuous, there had been times when consciousness, even the sort of consciousness that one has in sleep, had stopped dead and started again after a blank interval. But whether the intervals were of days or weeks or only seconds there was no way of knowing. With that first blow on the elbow the nightmare had started. Later he was to realize that all that then happened was merely a preliminary, a routine interrogation to which nearly all prisoners were subjected. There was a long range of crimes, espionage, sabotage and the like to which everyone had to confess as a matter of course. The confession was a formality, though the torture was real. How many times he had been beaten, how long the beatings had continued he could not remember. Always there were five or six men in black uniforms at him simultaneously. Sometimes it was fists, sometimes it was truncheons, sometimes it was steel rods, sometimes it was boots. There were times when he rolled about the floor as shameless as an animal, writhing his body this way and that in an endless, hopeless effort to dodge the kicks, and simply inviting more and yet more kicks, in his ribs, in his belly, on his elbows, on his shins, in his groin, in his testicles, on the bone at the base of his spine. There were times when it went on and on until the cruel, wicked, unforgivable thing seemed to him not that the guards continued to beat him, but that he could not force himself into losing consciousness. There were times when his nerves so forsook him that he began shouting for mercy even before the beating began, when the mere sight of a fist drawn back for a blow was enough to make him pour forth a confession of real and imaginary crimes. There were other times when he started out with the resolve of confessing nothing, when every word had to be forced out of him between gasps of pain, and there were times when he feebly tried to compromise, when he said to himself, "I will confess, but not yet. I must hold out till the pain becomes unbearable. Three more kicks, two more kicks, and then I will tell them what they want." Sometimes he was beaten till he could hardly stand, then flung like a sack of potatoes under the stone floor of a cell left to recuperate for a few hours, and then taken out and beaten again. There were also longer periods of recovery. He remembered them dimly because they were spent chiefly in a sleep or stupor. He remembered a cell with a plank bed, a sort of shelf sticking out from the wall and a tin wash basin, and meals of hot soup and bread and sometimes coffee. He remembered a surly barber arriving to scrape his chin and crop his hair, and businesslike unsympathetic men in white coats feeling his pulse, tapping his reflexes, turning up his eyelids, running harsh fingers over him in search of broken bones, and shooting needles into his arm to make him sleep. The beatings grew less frequent, and became mainly a threat, a horror to which he could be sent back at any moment when his answers were unsatisfactory. His questioners now were not ruffians in black uniforms but party intellectuals. Little rotund men with quick movements and flashing spectacles, who worked on him in relays over periods which lasted he thought he could not be sure, ten or twelve hours at a stretch. These other questioners sought to it that he was in constant slight pain. But it was not chiefly pain that they relied on. They slapped his face, wrung his ears, pulled his hair, made him stand on one leg, refused him leave to urinate, shone glaring lights in his face until his eyes ran with water. But the aim of this was simply to humiliate him and destroy his power of arguing and reasoning. Their real weapon was the merciless questioning that went on and on, hour after hour, tripping him up, laying traps for him, twisting everything that he said, convicting him at every step of lies and self-contradiction until he began weeping as much from shame as from nervous fatigue. Sometimes he would weep half a dozen times in a single session. Most of the time they screamed abuse at him and threatened at every hesitation to deliver him over to the guards again, but sometimes they would suddenly change their tune, call him comrade, appeal to him in the name of Ingsoc and Big Brother, and ask him sorrowfully whether even now he had not enough loyalty to the party left to make him wish to undo the evil he had done. When his nerves were in rags after hours of questioning even this appeal could reduce him to sniveling tears. In the end the nagging voices broke him down more completely than the boots and fists of the guards. He became simply a mouth that uttered, a hand that signed whatever was demanded of him. His sole concern was to find out what they wanted him to confess and then confess it quickly before the bullying started anew. He confessed to the assassination of eminent party members, the distribution of seditious pamphlets, embezzlement of public funds, sale of military secrets, sabotage of every kind. He confessed that he had been a spy in the pay of the East Asian government as far back as 1968. He confessed that he was a religious believer, an admirer of capitalism and a sexual pervert. He confessed that he had murdered his wife, although he knew and his questioners must have known that his wife was still alive. He confessed that for years he had been in personal touch with Goldstein and had been a member of an underground organization which had included almost every human being he had ever known. It was easier to confess everything and implicate everybody. Besides, in a sense it was all true. It was true that he had been the enemy of the party, and in the eyes of the party there was no distinction between the thought and the deed. There were also memories of another kind. They stood out in his mind disconnectedly like pictures with blackness all round them. He was in a cell, which might have been either dark or light because he could see nothing except a pair of eyes. Near at hand some kind of instrument was ticking slowly and regularly. The eyes grew larger and more luminous. Suddenly he floated out of his seat, dived into the eyes and was swallowed up. He was strapped into a chair surrounded by dials under dazzling lights. A man in a white coat was reading the dials. There was a tramp of heavy boots outside. The door clanged open. The waxen-faced officer marched in followed by two guards. "Room 101," said the officer. The man in the white coat did not turn around. He did not look at Winston either, he was looking only at the dials. He was strolling down a mighty corridor, a kilometer wide, full of glorious golden light, roaring with laughter and shouting out confessions at the top of his voice. He was confessing everything, even the things he had succeeded in holding back under the torture. He was relating the entire history of his life to an audience who knew it already. With him were the guards, the other questioners, the men in white coats, O'Brien, Julia, Mr. Charrington, all rolling down the corridor together and shouting with laughter. Some dreadful thing which had lain embedded in the future had somehow been skipped over and had not happened. Everything was all right. There was no more pain, the last detail of his life was laid bare, understood, forgiven. He was starting up from the plank bed in the half-certainty that he had heard O'Brien's voice. All through his interrogation, although he had never seen him, he had had the feeling that O'Brien was at his elbow, just out of sight. It was O'Brien who was directing everything. It was he who set the guards onto Winston and who prevented them from killing him. It was he who decided when Winston should scream with pain, when he should have a respite, when he should be fed, when he should sleep, when the drug should be pumped into his arm. It was he who asked the questions and suggested the answers. He was the tormentor, he was the protector, he was the inquisitor, he was the friend. And once, Winston could not remember whether it was in drugged sleep, or in normal sleep, or even in a moment of wakefulness, a voice murmured in his ear, "Don't worry, Winston. You are in my keeping. For seven years I have watched over you. Now the turning point has come. I shall save you. I shall make you perfect." He was not sure whether it was O'Brien's voice, but it was the same voice that had said to him, "We shall meet in the place where there is no darkness, in that other dream, seven years ago." He did not remember any ending to his interrogation. There was a period of blackness, and then the cell or room in which he now was had gradually materialized round him. He was almost flat on his back and unable to move. His body was held down at every essential point. Even the back of his head was gripped in some manner. O'Brien was looking down at him gravely and rather sadly. His face, seen from below, looked coarse and worn, with pouches under the eyes and tired lines from nose to chin. He was older than Winston had thought him, he was perhaps forty-eight or fifty. Under his hand there was a dial, with a lever on top and figures running round the face. "I told you," said O'Brien, "that if we met again it would be here." "Yes," said Winston. Without any warning except a slight movement of O'Brien's hand a wave of pain flooded his body. It was a frightening pain, because he could not see what was happening and he had the feeling that some mortal injury was being done to him. He did not know whether the thing was really happening, or whether the effect was electrically produced, but his body was being wrenched out of shape, the joints were being slowly torn apart. Although the pain had brought the sweat out on his forehead the worst of all was the fear that his backbone was about to snap. He set his teeth and breathed hard through his nose trying to keep silent as long as possible. "You are afraid," said O'Brien watching his face, "that in another moment something is going to break. Your especial fear is that it will be your backbone. You have a vivid mental picture of the vertebrae snapping apart and the spinal fluid dripping out of them. That is what you are thinking, is it not, Winston?" Winston did not answer. O'Brien drew back the lever on the dial. The wave of pain receded almost as quickly as it had come. "That was forty," said O'Brien. "You can see that the numbers on this dial run up to a hundred. Will you please remember throughout our conversation that I have it in my power to inflict pain on you at any moment and to whatever degree I choose? If you tell me any lies, or attempt to prevaricate in any way, or even fall below your usual level of intelligence you will cry out with pain instantly. Do you understand that?" "Yes," said Winston. O'Brien's manner became less severe. He resettled his spectacles thoughtfully and took a pace or two up and down. When he spoke his voice was gentle and patient. He had the air of a doctor, a teacher, even a priest, anxious to explain and persuade rather than to punish. "I am taking trouble with you, Winston," he said, "because you are worth trouble. You know perfectly well what is the matter with you. You have known it for years, though you have fought against the knowledge. You are mentally deranged. You suffer from a defective memory. You are unable to remember real events and you persuade yourself that you remember other events which never happened. Fortunately, it is curable. You have never cured yourself of it because you did not choose to. There was a small effort of the will that you were not ready to make. Even now I am well aware you are clinging to your disease under the impression that it is a virtue. Now we will take an example. At this moment which power is Oceania at war with? When I was arrested, Oceania was at war with East Asia." "With East Asia, good. And Oceania has always been at war with East Asia, has it not?" Winston drew in his breath. He opened his mouth to speak, and then did not speak. He could not take his eyes away from the dial. "The truth, please, Winston. Your truth. Tell me what you think you remember." "I remember that until, only a week before I was arrested, we were not at war with East Asia at all. We were in alliance with them. The war was against your Asia. That had lasted for four years." Before that, O'Brien stopped him with a movement of the hand. "Another example," he said. "Some years ago you had a very serious delusion indeed. You believed that three men, three one-time party members named Jones, Aronson and Rutherford, men who were executed for treachery and sabotage after making the fullest possible confession, were not guilty of the crimes they were charged with. You believed that you had seen unmistakable documentary evidence proving that their confessions were false. There was a certain photograph about which you had a hallucination. You believed that you had actually held it in your hands. It was a photograph something like this." An oblong slip of newspaper had appeared between O'Brien's fingers. For perhaps five seconds it was within the angle of Winston's vision. It was a photograph, and there was no question of its identity. It was the photograph. It was another copy of the photograph of Jones, Aronson and Rutherford at the party function in New York which he had chanced upon eleven years ago and promptly destroyed. For only an instant it was before his eyes then it was out of sight again. But he had seen it, unquestionably he had seen it. He made a desperate, agonizing effort to wrench the top half of his body free. It was impossible to move so much as a centimeter in any direction. For the moment he had even forgotten the dial. All he wanted was to hold the photograph in his fingers again or at least to see it. "It exists!" he cried. "No," said O'Brien. He stepped across the room. There was a memory hole in the opposite wall. O'Brien lifted the grating. Unseen the frail slip of paper was whirling away on the current of warm air. It was vanishing in a flash of flame. O'Brien turned away from the wall. "Ashes," he said. "Not even identifiable ashes, dust. It does not exist. It never existed." "But it did exist! It does exist! It exists in memory! I remember it, you remember it." "I do not remember it," said O'Brien. Winston's heart sank. That was double-think. He had a feeling of deadly helplessness. If he could have been certain that O'Brien was lying it would not have seemed to matter. But it was perfectly possible that O'Brien had really forgotten the photograph. And if so then already he would have forgotten his denial of remembering it and forgotten the act of forgetting. How could one be sure that it was simply trickery? Perhaps that lunatic dislocation in the mind could really happen. That was the thought that defeated him. O'Brien was looking down at him speculatively. More than ever he had the air of a teacher taking pains with a wayward but promising child. "There is a party slogan dealing with control of the past," he said. "Repeat it, if you please." "Who controls the past controls the future. Who controls the present controls the past," repeated Winston obediently. "Who controls the present controls the past," said O'Brien nodding his head with slow approval. "Is it your opinion, Winston, that the past has real existence?" "Is it your opinion, Winston, that the past has real existence?" Again, the feeling of helplessness descended upon Winston. His eyes flitted toward the dial. He not only did not know whether yes or no was the answer that would save him from pain, he did not even know which answer he believed to be the true one. O'Brien smiled faintly. "You are no metaphysician, Winston," he said. "Until this moment, you never had considered what is meant by existence. I will put it more precisely. Does the past exist concretely in space? Is there somewhere or other, a place, a world of solid objects, where the past is still happening?" "No." "Then where does the past exist, if at all? In records. It is written down. In records. And... In the mind. In human memories. In memory." "Very well, then. We, the party, control all records, and we control all memories. Then we control the past, do we not?" "But how can you stop people remembering things?" cried Winston again, momentarily forgetting the dial. "It is involuntary. It is outside oneself. How can you control memory? You have not controlled mine." O'Brien's manner grew stern again. He laid his hand on the dial. "On the contrary," he said. "You have not controlled it. That is what has brought you here. You are here because you have failed in humility and self-discipline. You would not make the act of submission, which is the price of sanity. You prefer to be a lunatic, a minority of one. Only the disciplined mind can see reality, Winston. You believe that reality is something objective, external, existing in its own right. You also believe that the nature of reality is self-evident. When you delude yourself into thinking that you see something, you assume that everyone else sees the same thing as you. But I tell you, Winston, that reality is not external. Reality exists in the human mind and nowhere else. Not in the individual mind, which can make mistakes, and in any case soon perishes. Only in the mind of the party, which is collective and immortal. Whatever the party holds to be truth, is truth. It is impossible to see reality except by looking through the eyes of the party. That is the fact that you have got to relearn, Winston. It needs an act of self-destruction, an effort of the will. You must humble yourself before you can become sane." He paused for a few moments, as though to allow what he had been saying to sink in. "Do you remember," he went on, "writing in your diary, 'Freedom is the freedom to say that two plus two make four'?" "Yes," said Winston. O'Brien held up his left hand, its back toward Winston, with the thumb hidden and the four fingers extended. "How many fingers am I holding up, Winston?" "Four." "And if the party says that it is not four, but five, then how many?" "Four." The word ended in a gasp of pain. The needle of the dial had shot up to fifty-five. The sweat had sprung out all over Winston's body. The air tore into his lungs and issued again in deep groans, which even by clenching his teeth, he could not stop. O'Brien watched him, the four fingers still extended. He drew back the lever. This time, the pain was only slightly eased. "How many fingers, Winston?" "Four." The needle went up to sixty. "How many fingers, Winston?" "Four! Four! What else can I say? Four!" The needle must have risen again, but he did not look at it. The heavy, stern face and the four fingers filled his vision. The fingers stood up before his eyes like pillars, enormous, blurry, and seeming to vibrate, but unmistakably four. "How many fingers, Winston?" "Four! Stop it! Stop it! How can you go on? Four! Four!" "How many fingers, Winston?" "Five! Five! Five!" "No, Winston, that is no use. You are lying. You still think there are four. How many fingers, please?" "Four! Five! Four! Anything you like. Only stop it! Stop the pain!" Abruptly, he was sitting up, with O'Brien's arm round his shoulders. He had perhaps lost consciousness for a few seconds. The bonds that had held his body down were loosened. He felt very cold. He was shaking uncontrollably. His teeth were chattering. The tears were rolling down his cheeks. For a moment, he clung to O'Brien like a baby, curiously comforted by the heavy arm round his shoulders. He had the feeling that O'Brien was his protector, that the pain was something that came from outside, from some other source, and that it was O'Brien who could save him from it. "You are a slow learner, Winston," said O'Brien gently. "How can I help it?" he blubbered. "How can I help seeing what is in front of my eyes? Two and two are four." "Sometimes, Winston. Sometimes, they are five. Sometimes, they are three. Sometimes, they are all of them at once. You must try harder. It is not easy to become sane." He laid Winston down on the bed. The grip on his limbs tightened again, but the pain had ebbed away and the trembling had stopped, leaving him merely weak and cold. O'Brien motioned with his head to the man in the white coat, who had stood immobile throughout the proceedings. The man in the white coat bent down and looked closely into Winston's eyes, felt his pulse laid in ear against his chest, tapped here and there, then he nodded to O'Brien. "Again," said O'Brien. The pain flowed into Winston's body. The needle must be at seventy, seventy-five. He had shut his eyes this time. He knew that the fingers were still there, and still four. All that mattered was somehow to stay alive until the spasm was over. He had ceased to notice whether he was crying out or not. The pain lessened again. He opened his eyes. O'Brien had drawn back the lever. "How many fingers, Winston?" "Four. I suppose there are four. I would see five if I could. I am trying to see five." "Which do you wish? To persuade me that you see five, or really to see them?" "Really to see them." "Again," said O'Brien. Perhaps the needle was at eighty, ninety. Winston could only intermittently remember why the pain was happening. Behind his screwed-up eyelids, a forest of fingers seemed to be moving in a sort of dance, weaving in and out, disappearing behind one another and reappearing again. He was trying to count them; he could not remember why. He knew only that it was impossible to count them, and that this was somehow due to the mysterious identity between five and four. The pain died down again. When he opened his eyes, it was to find that he was still seeing the same thing. Innumerable fingers, like moving trees, were still streaming past in either direction, crossing and re-crossing. He shut his eyes again.
Context of white supremacy. The number to dial is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six. And the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you have questions or would like to participate. The number again is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six. And the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. Let's see, the folks that are with us already. We should have our caller in Brooklyn, eighteen oh four. Your two lines should be open. If any other hands pop up, I will open their lines up as they come on the screen. Eighteen oh four in Brooklyn caller, you should be with us.
Good evening, Gus, and the callers. How's everything tonight?
Right poorly.
Right on, right on. Yes. To be expected. I see this statement, it really gives credence. It really, like the way that we call our ministry of love out here, you know, we call it the correctional, correctional facility. And I, it just really, it's like, correctional. It is very interesting that they call it that, and just how, you know, you lay out how white supremacy has a lot to do with the words, you know, the wordplay, the way they use words to, and also how he says in there, the party, you know, the real weapon, he says, "The real weapon was the merciless questioning." And it's like, in the system of white supremacy, it's like, individuals are the machine of white supremacy, like the individual white supremacists altogether in the system is what is the system of white supremacy. And it's like, they are the technology that's operating this machine, although we are, of course, being used, you know, to enhance the machine. They are the bare bones of it, and it's just like, it seems like Winston is more comfortable when he is kind of looking down the barrel of that gun, you know, so to speak. Just, I mean, it seems like he's more comfortable when he's thinking about the terror of how, you know, the whole book, he's talking about how eventually, he's gonna have to take that long walk, you know, and he knows he's gonna get shot the back of the head, or the neck, you know, they always shoot you in the back of the neck. It's like, he seems like he's more comfortable thinking about that eventuality, and like this whole little revolutionary, kind of, little, this little, almost a game, you know, I mean, the little side thing he's doing. He doesn't really seem to be really fully thinking out that aspect. I mean, he's not capable. Like, I was asking the guest yesterday, "Do you think white people are capable of actually knowing what justice would be if they saw, like, if justice bopped you on the head, would you even know it was there?" Like, I think that it seems, like, Winston is just much more comfortable with, you know, being with O'Brien, and having whatever his fingernails pulled out, or whatever, getting beat up. It's like he's more comfortable with being corrected. That's why I like the correctional system. So that was a couple of thoughts.
I do agree about the part where it's impossible for him to tell justice. But I also think what's going on here is just a classic session of mind-control programming. I think that's really what's going on, especially with the, you know, is it four, is it five? I mean, it's literally being, having information downloaded in your brain that can be retrieved with cues, with triggers. So it's a whole reconditioning, and it's akin to what was going on in the Nazi camps. It's a lot of the, you know, the man with the white coat. It's not just correction taking place, it's actually brainwashing and mind-control programming.
Well, I guess, what I mean by correction is that, like, I mean, like, if, like, out here in New York, right, if, because I've been in central booking, like, twelve, like, you know, handful of times, and I never did anything really more, you know, than when I was a teenager, maybe trying to jump on a train and not pay for it, or something. But I've been in central bookings a handful of times, and it's mostly white people, you know? Mostly white people that are administering these facilities, and there's mostly black people being housed inside the facilities. I saw some similarities, like the thing with the toilet, the guy's taking, you know, defecating in the cell, and you can't, like, really turn away from it. It's the same way here, like, I mean, the toilet in a cell, where there's, like, you know, thirty dudes, or ten dudes, or whatever, like, five dudes, and the toilet's just right there, and there's no wall around it or anything. If you have to take crap, you have to use the toilet, and you're in there for, like, thirty-six hours straight, and, I mean, what are you gonna do? And, you know, they have alcohol and stuff, they, like, distill fruit snacks, they put sugar packs in a plastic bag, and, like, hide it behind the bench for as long as possible, and steal their own liquor, and they have, like, drugs, and these, like, super anti-sexual guys, that, you know, they're doing stuff with the guards, or whatever. But it's like, not, it's like, it's not for us. So it's like, what I'm saying is that Winston seems to be more comfortable with being in that situation. So it's like, it seems like there's a natural relationship between white people and what they call the correctional facilities. Like, maybe it works for them. Like, it, like, it's not like they really have to be mind-controlled to follow that program. It's like, they kind of know that that's what they need to do, if you see what I'm saying, like, saying correctional.
Yeah, 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 no, I actually completely agree with you. And I think that our points are parallel. Mine wasn't really to contradict yours, and I do think that both things are going on, and I do think that mind-control programming is happening, in the sense that he's being, he's being brainwashed into not opposing the party again, right? And that's the whole point of, reality is what the party is. Whatever the party says is, that's what I mean. So, I mean, it's correctional, too, to the degree that he was trying to work with the brotherhood, now he is being reprogrammed to be compliant to the party.
I'll just throw in one last thing. I totally agree, I mean, just the words themselves, like, brainwash, like, I mean, that's, I mean, the brain isn't being removed and scrubbed out with soap, you know, I mean, mind-control is probably more accurate, as far as, you know, just the words, but...
Agreed, agreed.
I don't think it's necessarily controlled, though, if the person is so willing. Like, not even willing, it's like he's got some, like, kind of precondition that makes him just, like, want, it's like, he had this, like, anti-sexual thing with O'Brien, where he's, like, in the place where there's no darkness, like, I mean, you know, like, it's like a romantic, and it's totally down with people's values, it's like, they're very, like, Edgar Allan Poe, like, all these, like, poetry about, like, death, and like, you know, I mean, I can't really rattle off names right now, but they just have a pre-occupation with, like, pretty gloomy stuff.
I agree with you. I, I think that some of it, there's definitely some of that going on. There's also probably some Stockholm syndrome. I mean, with all this, I mean, it's known that people who are tortured end up bonding with their abuser. So there's part of that, too, and I agree that in this case, yeah, in, yes, in this case, it's all, it's all happening within the, yeah, with the notion that ultimately the party knows best for him, kind of like father knows best. And it's definitely a double S, you know, team phenomenon.
Shadow should be with us as well. Shadow?
Hey, how you doing, Gus? How you doing, all the other callers? I felt like the main thing that I observed was how the brainwashing that he was doing, he was actually trying to get him to believe things that were, that were very elementary, like, two plus two equals five, when it needs to be. To get you to the point where you believe something that you know is false, and something that's very simple, that's something that's complicated, the way they do, the brainwashing they do to the general population by changing words and everything like that. This is just, now we're going for the most, and they're doing it through torture, and violence and deception, as always.
Yeah, I mean, when I use the word mind-control, I mean MKUltra-type stuff.
Pardon me, I didn't hear you?
I use the word mind-control as in MKUltra.
Has anybody read Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy? I don't do go far, it's totally unpointed, but there was a Room 101 in Hitchhiker's Guide, I believe. I read it like ten years ago, but I feel like...
Have not read that. I mean to get to it, though.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's kind of dovetailing with that.
A lot of this reminded me of the Central Park Five case, or Abu Ghraib, or whatever other examples you want to pick out. White people seem to get a real kick out of getting people in greater confinement, and torturing them, and making them confess to things that they didn't do. Their whole history seems rife with that sort of, with these sorts of examples, even the case in Chicago that was on Sixty Minutes, I think, last month, where they said Chicago is the capital of false confessions, where they get you the same technique, violence, words, using, asking you questions, shining the light in your face, depriving you of food and water, same sort... face, depriving you of food and water, same sort of, uh, technique seems to be a core aspect of how they practice racism, white supremacy. And it reminded me, I think, several lis- uh, listeners have talked about, when white people put you in these situations, they put you in greater confinement, or they torture you, or whatever they're doing to abuse you, then they'll turn around and be the ones to rescue you. Uh, the scene where O'Brien is, uh, holding Winston, and he says he felt like a baby blubbering in his arms after he'd been shocked, or whatever they were doing to him on the table, uh, they will do the same sort of thing, put you in greater confinement, and then it'll be white people, uh, that'll be the ones that'll come and rescue you, and maybe have a biscuit and some water for you, and they'll nurse you back to health. Stockholm Syndrome, very seda, and that too is a part of the brain trashing, you have total control over you, whether you live, whether you die, it's all on us. Uh, the person that called in, uh, on, well, I don't know if this is Skype or not, uh, I don't know, 9776, your line should be open as well.
Yes, uh, greetings, Gus, greetings to the callers and all the other listeners. I just have, uh, one quick questions, um, uh, well, I should say questions. Um, I was listening to the audio, I wasn't quite sure, I was a little bit confused about one, um, some things that O'Brien said. He said that he'd been watching him for seven years, and that he could read his mind. Now, the technology that they have, was it so advanced that they can read your mind? Uh, because I was, I was a bit confused, um, with that statement, because he could almost, almost, um, tele- telepathically, like, read Win- Winston's mind, I, I was wondering how is that possible, you know? Uh, maybe you guys could, uh, help me out with that.
I didn't see any evidence in the book that they had technology to actually read your mind, but I think, and it's very similar, in my opinion, to white supremacy, where they want to give the impression, they at least want you to think that they are omnipotent in that manner, that they can read your mind, they know everything that's happening worldwide, they want you to think that way, and I think that comes up repeatedly in the book, where Winston is saying, oh, it's like they could read my mind, specifically with O'Brien, it's like he could read my mind, he knew about the dream, and we'll meet in the dark place. They do have a lot of surveillance, uh, obviously with the, the screens that are up everywhere that seem to be able to monitor what you're doing, and they can hear what you're saying, so that definitely is present, but I think a lot of it is, is just that they want you to think that way, not that they have the ability to read your mind and, and that sort of thing, but they want you to think that way.
But, but, but how, how can he read his, uh, how can he know his dreams? Like, how is that even possible? I mean, like, he was pretty much saying verbatim every single thing that he was dreaming about, you know, like, like, and, or, or maybe, maybe I'm re- um, reading it wrong.
Can I ask a question? Was this before or after the torture that he said this?
Even, even, uh, I don't know if you guys remember, when he went to, um, when he thought that he was joining the, uh, the Brotherhood, he even, you know, um, I believe, uh, O'Brien, I think hinted at the fact that, you know, he was, uh, that he knew about the, 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 uh, maybe Winston was talking in his head, I'm not sure, but it seemed like O'Brien sorta like had a, uh, uh, inside, you know, knowledge in his, you know, in his mind, like, you know, even, even during, when they were torturing him, like, you know, he was pretty much saying, you know, saying all of, all of that stuff too, I mean, he was saying, you know, uh, you know, seven years ago, I've been watching you, I know about the dreams and this, that, the other, I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out how, how, how does he know, you know?
They, they watched every movement of these people, and they probably read his diary.
Hmm, well, that's probably what it was, probably, uh, they read his, read, um, his, uh, diary, probably wrote, uh, the dreams down. Did he, did he say that in the book? I might've missed that, I mean, did he say that he wrote down his dreams on, in the diary?
I don't remember that, but I, I mean, I, I wouldn't, i- it seems very likely.
I'm looking at that passage, uh, where, where Winston is talking with O'Brien after he's been captured, uh, and it says, "He was starting up from the plank bed in the half certainty that he had heard O'Brien's voice." Now, see that right there, I think some of this, it's, it's not even really clear if O'Brien is really saying this, or if Winston is dreaming, and I think that's, that's also a part of what they wanna create here, where it's difficult to gauge whether this is really happening, or if he's dreaming this, but it goes on and says, uh, "All through his interrogation, although he had never seen him, he had been feeling that O'Brien was at his elbow just out of sight. It was O'Brien who was directing everything. It was he who set the guards onto Winston and who prevented them from killing him. It was he who had decided when Winston should scream with pain, when he should have a respite, when he should be fed, when he should sleep, when the drugs should be pumped into his arm. It was he who asked the questions and suggested the answers. He was the tormentor, he was the protector, he was the inquisitor, he was the friend. And once Winston could not remember whether it was in a drugged sleep, or in normal sleep, or even in a moment of wakefulness," there it is again, "a voice murmured in his ear, 'Don't worry, Winston, you are in my keeping. For seven years I have watched over you. Now the turning point has come. I shall save you, I shall make you perfect.'" He was not sure whether it was O'Brien's voice, but it was the same voice that had said to him, "We shall meet in the place where there is no darkness, in that other dream seven years ago." So, to me, it's all very spec- it's not concrete that Br- uh, O'Brien is actually there and saying these things, uh, in this passage, it doesn't even suggest that O'Brien had said to him, at least in this context, about knowing about the dream, although I think it definitely makes sense that they probably read his diary, and, and you will get more information, some of this will come out as we continue to go, you'll get more info about O'Brien, and who he is, and, and all that, so, prob- more information will probably come from this as we continue to read. Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Yeah, they also mentioned how, uh, a big part of scientific research of that world was them figuring out ways to surveil people, and how to get even facial expressions out of people to see what they were thinking, so, put a lot of time and energy into trying to, uh, make sure people cannot hide anything. So, like you said, I think it'll come later as to what, uh, who O'Brien is, and what he is, and how he might know some of the things he knows, but just from the passage you read, it seems like he's been confused and drugged.
I, I got a, one last quick comment I'd like to make. When I was, um, listening to the, uh, torture that they were giving to, uh, Winston, it reminded me of that guest you had on the other day, Gus, um, William Anderson, uh, the third, I think his name is, and, um, it reminded me how he was talking about the way they mistreated him when he was at the, uh, uh, station, you know, they refused to call an ambulance, and, you know, you know, and tasered him, I mean, it, it kind of reminded me of some of the same tactics that they used on Winston, um, uh, uh, when I was listening to the, uh, to the audio.
I think white people are very, very comfortable, uh, with these techniques, uh, worldwide, same way of, of treating, abusing folks, uh, and it's ea- I think, it's easy, that's one of the things I think is, it is important to keep this in mind, uh, it's easy for white people to do this sort of thing. As Mr. Nero has said, white people have fun killing people, uh, they have fun torturing people. I think if you look at some of the photographs from, uh, the armed services, when they had been overseas, and they've taken photographs posing with bodies, and people that they've killed and hacked up, and they're smiling with glee, as though it's a party for them. They enjoy this sort of thing, and the people that they don't kill, uh, that they use these tactics on, they know the, how this will impair your ability to think, reason, uh, to function in a logical manner, they know this is a major way of manipulating how someone thinks, how someone behaves, long-term ramifications, they understand, and I guess, reminded me of the Central Park Five case as well, uh, the Chicago, uh, Sixty Minutes special, where these, sometimes it'll be young teenagers, sometimes it'll be older folks, where you can get someone in that sort of environment, uh, which the entire world is, where you control whether or not they even can go to the bathroom, phew, you can, uh, you can get people to pretty much agree to anything. Yes, I raped her, yes, two plus two is ten, whatever you say.
Yeah, um, he, he's talking about, um, O- when O'Brien, I believe, was talking about, um, how, 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 uh, re- I wrote down reality, reality does not exist, 'cause I've heard that in a, in a trance song of all places before, but, um, just how, you know, whatever they say goes, basically, they can deny reality and tell you whatever they say is, is, and then they enforce that, you know, and that has to be what you repeat, and then you're following the law. But, um, he also, they also say, uh, to the party, "There was no distinction between thoughts and actions." And I'm thinking, like, thought, speech, and action, like, um, like, that's like the, the way that, you know, you begin thinking about something, and then you talk about it, and then you do something. So it's like they fully understand how actions emerge from thoughts, and, uh, they know how to manipulate people to achieve a certain goal. Um, also, he, he says, uh, "In the face of pain, there are no heroes." I found that interesting, um, how he kind of buckles, what he's thinking about, oh, you know, what he's gonna do, like, this romantic kind of idea of, I, I see it, that's kinda like the anti-racist, like, they get romantically kind of linked to this idea of being a freedom fighter, or whatever, but then, like, and they're like, yeah, you know, you can cut my fa- you can, you know, cut me up and, you know, do, you can, you know, chop, chop, cut, you do whatever you want to me, and I'll never give up, but then, like, you know, something happens, and it's like, oh, forget it, you know? But, um, really, we need to be in a system where no one is allowed to be mistreated, there, there aren't really heroes when it comes to pain, it's like, we want the pain to end, and that's correct, you know, it's incorrect for people to be mistreated, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's pretty applicable to, to, uh, victims of racism as well. I was reminded, Back of the Bust, Back of the Bust, sorry, uh, he would pretty regularly say, everybody has a breaking point. Uh, in fact, he was talking about, uh, white supremacy enforcement agencies, CIA, FBI, on and on and on, uh, and he was saying that these organizations, white people in general, uh, that they, in abil- in addition to all of the terroristic things that they do, uh, that they have the ability to vote, to devote a lot of time and energy to studying non-white people, like, their COINTELPRO, uh, programs in the sixties against the Black Panthers, and Malcolm X, Martin Luther King, lots of other black people. A lot of what they did, in addition to or- in addition to orchestrating means in which black people would be killed, sometimes by other black people, sometimes by white people, a lot of what they did was intelligence gathering, and getting dossiers on people, and, uh, they would brag, we know this person better than they know themselves, 'cause we spent all this time following them around, and getting their bank records, and interviewing their whole family, and talking to all these people, that just when you're in a position of dominance, you can exert an extraordinary amount of control, uh, over people, even the people who are attempting to work against your system of domination and justice. And I think for non-white people, I have seen where we also have that tendency to romanticize, I just, to make it plain, to underestimate the power that white people have over us, and to overestimate our own power. And I see some of that in Winston, I see a lot of that in us, and talking, some of us that wanna talk real tough about what we'll do to these white people, and these crackers or nothing, and blah, 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 and then, you know, when the man, the woman, they show up, and they're ready to do what they do, uh, it can be a very different story, and I just think that's something, not in a defeatist manner, but I think it's important to be honest, uh, about the position that we're in, and, uh, just the fact, everybody has a breaking point, uh, whether it's something that they're doing directly to you, uh, or whether it's someone that you care about, everybody, uh, has a point where they, uh, just cannot endure anymore, and I think it's very important to be honest about that, because white people, I heard Desmond Tutu say this, uh, the evidence has shown, white people have no bounds, no minimum standard of conduct with regards to how non-white people can be treated, anything goes, any and everything, uh, so I just think that's really important to, to be truthful about that. I'll, I'll mute my line.
Um, I don't wanna dominate the call, but I, I was gonna say, um, it seems to me like, the most important, the most, like, kind of core, the core thing seems to be, like, like, it's interesting, before you started off on this book, for one thing, it, it had been suggested to me by someone I have a lot of respect for, my, my older, attempted brother, and so I'm glad that we're reading it, and I was thinking about Verico's veins for some reason, there's been a lot of coincidences lately, just things I've been thinking about and then seeing, but then the book starts off talking about Winston's Verico's vein, and how, you know, he's all pale, and like, pasty, and like, he's just whatever, like, some Joe Schmo nobody, like, you know, just that, that's how he sees himself, or whatever. But I feel like the impotence of this guy is like the central theme. I mean, like, even when he's trying to, like, do this whole freedom fighter thing, I mean, they could've chosen somebody more George Clooney-ish, you know, like, you know, they could've chosen some, like, handsome, dashing person, to like, be some, you know, sexy, you know, go-get-'em hero, but I mean, it's like, interesting, it's a very kind of, like, they put the emphasis on the impotence of this guy, and just, in, in the Francis Crest Welthing kind of scenario, I find that very interesting, that they would choose this character to, um, be the central theme of this book.
We can hear you, sir. I think quite a bit of it does match up, uh, uncanny, it's uncanny, the similarities, um, with Dr. Welthing's work and her theory, uh, this work, I think it matches up really well, uh, the paleness, the impotence, the chocolate, uh, the veins showing through in his pale skin, the paleness comes up so many times, I think, I've been highlighting where they point that out, uh, pointing out someone being pale, or really white, um, I think there are a lot of, uh, points that just match up really nicely with what she's talking about, as, as well as what Orwell is writing.
I'll throw out one last thing that I was, um, thinking about, that might be a bit of a stretch, but I've been thinking about it for a while. Robocop, okay, I grew up on movies like everyone else, but they build this person, right, just like, we're all built by society, I think especially, like, the, you know, non-white people who, you know, we've been, like, completely scrubbed in, inside, and they just, you know, put a whole new operating system inside of us, you know? And then, but like, in the end of the movie Robocop, when he goes, um, to ne- neutralize the person who he finds out is like the top enemy, like, the person that's like, you know, that, his, his, his main enemy, and then he realizes that they've built a program inside of him that prevents him from going after this person, um, because they are, because they work for what they call the company. I don't know, I grew up on movies, but I ju- I just, I just, uh, I couldn't really overlook that, just like they built this person like a machine, you know? And then they build him with a failsafe inside of him. He doesn't even know about it, but he realizes when he goes after the person that they built him with the most core program inside of him is to not go after the people that are his biggest enemies on the planet. Well, Dr. Kevorkian says that machines are non-white people, so... Mm-hmm. Might have something there.
That's in Demolition Man Two.
Mm-hmm.
What did you all think about the, uh, Parsons ending up in jail, uh, where his daughter, uh, has ratted him out, uh, or he's in greater confinement, uh, which Winston predicted earlier that he was gonna wind up there. Any thoughts on his, his child, his offspring, uh, being the one who rats him out?
Hey, hey, I remember them in the beginning of the book saying that that was a common feature of the society and that, uh, kids were, I mean, parents were afraid of their kids and, uh, it's, like you said, it was just not surprising. Uh, I remember, I can't remember the name of the guy he first met that talked real plainly. He believed in the party, but he also was a guy that was observant and said truth and he kept thinking to himself, "This guy's gonna get busted." And he doesn't even know it. Is that the same guy that you're talking about, Gus?
I think, I think that was Sim, if I'm saying his name correctly, but they all worked at the same place, they all had the same job. Uh, but yeah, he predicts, for different reasons, he predicts that they're both gonna be vaporized. Um, yeah. Yeah, that was his name, Sim, the one that spoke real, he seemed to be more intelligent than Parsons.
Yes.
Uh, and he said, "Yeah, he's too smart, uh, for his own good. He's gonna end up getting vaporized." And I think that also happened in the book as well.
White females generally maybe just, uh, they can be disarming and they can be destructive simultaneously, which would make both aspects even more disarming and even more destructive. And the youth also, you don't expect it from children, but they're probably getting the biggest dosage of, uh, like, like earlier in the book, they were saying how the, the schoolchildren were the most fiercely cheering when the, some cra- some politician was, uh, up on some, you know, on some stage screaming about all the war and stuff and getting everyone all, all amped up about the war and talking about how they're killing all the enemies and whatever. And the, the, the schoolchildren were the most, like they were, he said, he said they were like, like animals or something, the way he was talking about them, but, yeah. Gus just did that video, talking about the kid that, uh, was planning some, uh, some, some military, uh, assault at his school in Kentucky or whatever?
I don't know. Any other comments, folks wanna make sure they hit on before we hit second audio clip? Anything else that stood out of, uh, of importance? Yeah, I'm not sure if the, uh, book is gonna pop up today or not, uh, with regards to, uh, the Goldstein book that they, that Winston was reading, uh, to get more information about how the party operated and learning about the Brotherhood and how they can work against, uh, this system of injustice. I'm not sure if that's in this segment or if that's gonna come up next week, but I would say definitely keep an eye out for that when that comes up, when they give more information about that book. I think that is very applicable to the system of racism, white supremacy, and, uh, I'll just leave it there, just keep an eye out for when that pops up. Any other comments? Alrighty, I will assume everybody's good. We will get, uh, audio segment number two. Uh, I'll give off the number once we're done with the second segment and if folks have anything they wanna share, we will get to that on the other side of the audio. Uh, getting close to the end. Uh, this is, uh, segment number two, nineteen eighty-four, George Orwell, Context of White Supremacy.
How many fingers am I holding up, Winston? I don't know. I don't know. You will kill me if you do that again. Four, five, six, in all honesty, I don't know. Better, said O'Brien. A needle slid into Winston's arm. Almost in the same instant, a blissful, healing warmth spread all through his body. The pain was already half-forgotten. He opened his eyes and looked up gratefully at O'Brien. At sight of the heavy, lined face so ugly and so intelligent, his heart seemed to turn over. If he could've moved, he would've stretched out a hand and laid it on O'Brien's arm. He had never loved him so deeply as at this moment, and not merely because he had stopped the pain. The old feeling that at bottom it did not matter whether O'Brien was a friend or an enemy had come back. O'Brien was a person who could be talked to. Perhaps one did not want to be loved so much as to be understood. O'Brien had tortured him to the edge of lunacy and in a little while, it was certain he would send him to his death. It made no difference. In some sense, that went deeper than friendship. They were intimates. Somewhere or other, although the actual words might never be spoken, there was a place where they could meet and talk. O'Brien was looking down at him with an expression which suggested that the same thought might be in his own mind. When he spoke, it was in an easy conversational tone. "Do you know where you are, Winston?" he said. "I don't know. I can guess in the Ministry of Love." "Do you know how long you have been here?" "I don't know. Days, weeks, months?" "I think it is months." "And why do you imagine that we bring people to this place?" "To make them confess." "No, that is not the reason. Try again." "To punish them." "No!" exclaimed O'Brien. His voice had changed extraordinarily and his face had suddenly become both stern and animated. "No! Not merely to extract your confession nor to punish you. Shall I tell you why we have brought you here? To cure you! To make you sane! Will you understand, Winston, that no one whom we bring to this place ever leaves our hands uncured? We are not interested in those stupid crimes that you have committed. The party is not interested in the overt act. The thought is all we care about. We do not merely destroy our enemies, we change them. Do you understand what I mean by that?" He was bending over Winston. His face looked enormous because of its nearness and hideously ugly because it was seen from below. Moreover, it was filled with a sort of exaltation, a lunatic intensity. Again, Winston's heart shrank. If it had been possible, he would've cowered deeper into the bed. He felt certain that O'Brien was about to twist the dial out of sheer wantonness. At this moment, however, O'Brien turned away. He took a pace or two, up and down. Then he continued, less vehemently. "The first thing for you to understand is that in this place, there are no martyrdoms. You have read of the religious persecutions of the past. In the Middle Ages, there was the Inquisition. It was a failure. It set out to eradicate heresy and ended by perpetuating it. For every heretic had burned at the stake, thousands of others rose up. Why was that? Because the Inquisition killed its enemies in the open and killed them while they were still unrepentant. In fact, it killed them because they were unrepentant. Men were dying because they would not abandon their true beliefs. Naturally, all the glory belonged to the victim and all the shame to the inquisitor who burned him. Later, in the twentieth century, there were the totalitarians, as they were called, there were the German Nazis and the Russian communists. The Russians persecuted heresy more cruelly than the Inquisition had done, and they imagined that they had learned from the mistakes of the past. They knew at any rate that one must not make martyrs. Before they exposed their victims to public trial, they deliberately set themselves to destroy their dignity. They wore them down by torture and solitude until they were despicable, cringing wretches, confessing whatever was put into their mouths, covering themselves with abuse, accusing and sheltering behind one another, whimpering for mercy. And yet, after only a few years, the same thing had happened over again. The dead men had become martyrs and their degradation was forgotten. Once again, why was it? In the first place, because the confessions that they had made were obviously extorted and untrue. We do not make mistakes of that kind. All the confessions that are uttered here are true. We make them true. And above all, we do not allow the dead to rise up against us. You must stop imagining that posterity will vindicate you, Winston. Posterity will never hear of you. You will be lifted clean out from the stream of history. We shall turn you into gas and pour you into the stratosphere. Nothing will remain of you, not a name in a register, not a memory in a living brain. You will be annihilated in the past as well as in the future. You will never have existed." "Then why bother to torture me?" thought Winston with a momentary bitterness. O'Brien checked his step as though Winston had uttered the thought aloud. His large, ugly face came nearer with the eyes a little narrowed. "You are thinking," he said, "that since we intend to destroy you utterly so that nothing that you say or do can make the smallest difference, in that case, why do we go to the trouble of interrogating you first? That is what you were thinking, was it not?" "Yes," said Winston. O'Brien smiled slightly. "You are a flaw in the pattern, Winston. You are a stain that must be wiped out. Did I not tell you just now that we are different from the persecutors of the past? We are not content with negative obedience, nor even with the most abject submission. When finally you surrender to us, it must be of your own free will. We do not destroy the heretic because he resists us. So long as he resists us, we never destroy him. We convert him. We capture his inner mind. We reshape him. We burn all evil and all illusion out of him. We bring him over to our side, not in appearance, but genuinely, heart and soul. We make him one of ourselves before we kill him. It is intolerable to us that an erroneous thought should exist anywhere in the world, however secret and powerless it may be. Even in the instant of death, we cannot permit any deviation. In the old days, the heretic walked to the stake, still a heretic proclaiming his heresy, exalting in it. Even the victim of the Russian purges could carry rebellion locked up in his skull as he walked down the passage waiting for the bullet. But we make the brain perfect before we blow it out. The command of the old despotisms was, "Thou shalt not." The command of the totalitarians was, "Thou shalt." Our command is, "Thou art." No one whom we bring to this place ever stands out against us. Everyone is washed clean. Even those three miserable traitors in whose innocence you once believed, Jones, Aronson and Rutherford, in the end, we broke them down. I took part in their interrogation myself. I saw them gradually worn down, whimpering, grovelling, weeping. And in the end, it was not with pain or fear, only with penitence. By the time we had finished with them, they were only the shells of men. There was nothing left in them except sorrow for what they had done and love of Big Brother. It was touching to see how they loved him. They begged to be shot quickly so that they could die while their minds were still clean." His voice had grown almost dreamy. The exaltation, the lunatic enthusiasm was still in his face. "He is not pretending," thought Winston. "He is not a hypocrite. He believes every word he says." What most depressed him was the consciousness of his own intellectual inferiority. He watched the heavy, yet graceful form strolling to and fro, in and out of the range of his vision. O'Brien was a being and always larger than himself. There was no idea that he had ever had or could have that O'Brien had not long ago known, examined and rejected. His mind contained Winston's mind. But in that case, how could it be true that O'Brien was mad? It must be he, Winston, who was mad. O'Brien halted and looked down at him. His voice had grown stern again. "Do not imagine that you will save yourself, Winston, however completely you surrender to us. No one who has once gone astray is ever spared, and even if we choose to let you live out the natural term of your life, still you would never escape from us. What happens to you here is forever. Understand that in advance. We shall crush you down to the point from which there is no coming back. Things will happen to you from which you could not recover if you lived a thousand years. Never again will you be capable of ordinary human feeling. Everything will be dead inside you. Never again will you be capable of love or friendship or joy of living or laughter or curiosity or courage or integrity. You will be hollow. We shall squeeze you empty and then we shall fill you in with ourselves." He paused and signed to the man in the white coat. Winston was aware of some heavy piece of apparatus being pushed into place behind his head. O'Brien had sat down beside the bed so that his face was almost on a level with Winston's. "Three thousand," he said, speaking over Winston's head to the man in the white coat. Two soft pads, which felt slightly moist, clamped themselves against Winston's temples. He quailed. There was a pain coming, a new kind of pain. O'Brien laid a hand reassuringly, almost kindly, on his. "This time it will not hurt," he said. "Keep your eyes fixed on mine." At this moment, there was a devastating explosion, or what seemed like an explosion, though it was not certain whether there was any noise. There was undoubtedly a blinding flash of light. Winston was not hurt, only prostrated. Although he had already been lying on his back when the thing happened, he had a curious feeling that he had been knocked into that position. A terrific, painless blow had flattened him out. Also, something had happened inside his head. As his eyes regained their focus, he remembered who he was and where he was and recognized the face that was gazing into his own. But somewhere or other, there was a large patch of emptiness, as though a piece had been taken out of his brain. "It will not last," said O'Brien. "Look me in the eyes. What country is Oceania at war with?" Winston thought. He knew what was meant by Oceania and that he himself was a citizen of Oceania. He also remembered Eurasia and East Asia, but who was at war with whom, he did not know. In fact, he had not been aware that there was any war. "I don't remember." "Oceania is at war with East Asia. Do you remember now?" "Yes. Oceania has always been at war with East Asia. Since the beginning of your life, since the beginning of the party, since the beginning of history, the war has continued without a break, always the same war. Do you remember that?" "Yes." "Eleven years ago, you created a legend about three men who had been condemned to death for treachery. You pretended that you had seen a piece of paper which proved them innocent. No such piece of paper ever existed. You invented it and later you grew to believe in it. You remember now the very moment at which you first invented it. Do you remember that?" "Yes." "Just now I held up the fingers of my hand to you, you saw five fingers. Do you remember that?" "Yes." O'Brien held up the fingers of his left hand with the thumb concealed. "There are five fingers there. Do you see five fingers?" "Yes." And he did see them, for a fleeting instant, before the scenery of his mind changed. He saw five fingers and there was no deformity. Then everything was normal again, then the old fear, the hatred and the bewilderment came crowding back again. But there had been a moment, he did not know how long, thirty seconds perhaps, of luminous certainty, when each new suggestion of O'Brien's had filled up a patch of emptiness and become absolute truth and when two and two could have been three as easily as five if that were what was needed. It had faded out before O'Brien had dropped his hand. But though he could not recapture it, he could remember it, as one remembers a vivid experience at some remote period of one's life when one was in effect a different person. "You see now," said O'Brien, "that it is at any rate possible." "Yes," said Winston. O'Brien stood up with a satisfied air. Over to his left, Winston saw the man in the white coat break an ampule and draw back the plunger of a syringe. O'Brien turned to Winston- O'Brien turned to Winston with a smile. In almost the old manner, he resettled his spectacles on his nose. Do you remember writing in your diary, he said, that it did not matter whether I was a friend or an enemy, since I was at least a person who understood you and could be talked to? You're right. I enjoy talking to you. Your mind appeals to me. It resembles my own mind, except that you happen to be insane. Before we bring the session to an end, you can ask me a few questions if you choose.
Any question I like?
Anything. He saw that Winston's eyes were upon the dial. It is switched off. What is your first question?
What have you done with Julia, said Winston.
O'Brien smiled again. She betrayed you, Winston, immediately, unreservedly. I have seldom seen anyone come over to her so promptly. You would hardly recognize her if you saw her. All her rebelliousness, her deceit, her folly, her dirty-mindedness, everything has been burned out of her. It was a perfect conversion, a textbook case.
You tortured her.
O'Brien left this unanswered. Next question, he said.
Does Big Brother exist?
Of course he exists. The party exists. Big Brother is the embodiment of the party.
Does he exist in the same way as I exist?
You do not exist, said O'Brien. Once again, the sense of helplessness assailed him. He knew, or he could imagine, the arguments which proved his own nonexistence, but they were nonsense. They were only a play on words. Did not the statement "you do not exist" contain a logical absurdity? But what use was it to say so? His mind shriveled as he thought of the unanswerable, mad arguments with which O'Brien would demolish him.
I think I exist, he said wearily. I am conscious of my own identity. I was born and I shall die. I have arms and legs. I occupy a particular point in space. No other solid object can occupy the same point simultaneously. In that sense, does Big Brother exist?
It is of no importance. He exists.
Will Big Brother ever die?
Of course not. How could he die? Next question.
Does the Brotherhood exist?
That, Winston, you will never know. If we choose to set you free when we have finished with you, and if you live to be ninety years old, still you will never learn whether the answer to that question is yes or no. As long as you live, it will be an unsolved riddle in your mind. Winston lay silent. His breast rose and fell a little faster. He still had not asked the question that had come into his mind the first. He had got to ask it, and yet it was as though his tongue would not utter it. There was a trace of amusement in O'Brien's face. Even his spectacles seemed to wear an ironical gleam.
He knows, thought Winston suddenly. He knows what I'm going to ask. At the thought, the words burst out of him. What is in room one oh one?
The expression on O'Brien's face did not change. He answered dryly. You know what is in room one oh one, Winston. Everyone knows what is in room one oh one. He raised a finger to the man in the white coat. Evidently, the session was at an end. A needle jerked into Winston's arm. He sank almost instantly into deep sleep. Chapter Three. There are three stages in your reintegration, said O'Brien. There is learning, there is understanding, and there is acceptance. It is time for you to enter upon the second stage. As always, Winston was lying flat on his back. But of late, his bonds were looser. They still held him to the bed, but he could move his knees a little and could turn his head from side to side and raise his arms from the elbow. The dial also had grown to be less of a terror. He could evade its pangs if he was quick-witted enough. It was chiefly when he showed stupidity that O'Brien pulled the lever. Sometimes they got through a whole session without use of the dial. He could not remember how many sessions there had been. The whole process seemed to stretch out over a long indefinite time, weeks possibly. And the intervals between the sessions might sometimes have been days, sometimes only an hour or two. As you lie there, said O'Brien, you have often wondered, you have even asked me, why the Ministry of Love should expend so much time and trouble on you? And when you were free, you were puzzled by what was essentially the same question. You could grasp the mechanics of the society you lived in, but not its underlying motives. Do you remember writing in your diary, "I understand how, I do not understand why"? It was when you thought about why that you doubted your own sanity. You have read the book, Goldstein's book, or parts of it at least. Did it tell you anything that you did not know already?
You have read it, said Winston.
I wrote it. That is to say, I collaborated in writing it. No book is produced individually, as you know.
Is it true what it says?
As description, yes. The program it sets forth is nonsense. The secret accumulation of knowledge, a gradual spread of enlightenment, ultimately a proletarian rebellion, the overthrow of the party. You foresaw yourself that that was what it would say. It is all nonsense. The proletarians will never revolt, not in a thousand years or a million. They cannot. I do not have to tell you the reason. You know it already. If you have ever cherished any dreams of violent insurrection, you must abandon them. There is no way in which the party can be overthrown. The rule of the party is forever. Make that the starting point of your thoughts. He came closer to the bed. Forever, he repeated. And now let us get back to the question of how and why. You understand well enough how the party maintains itself in power. Now tell me why we cling to power. What is our motive? Why should we want power? Go on, speak, he added, as Winston remained silent. Nevertheless, Winston did not speak for another moment or two. A feeling of weariness had overwhelmed him. The faint mad gleam of enthusiasm had come back into O'Brien's face. He knew in advance what O'Brien would say, that the party did not seek power for its own ends, but only for the good of the majority, that it sought power because men in the mass were frail, cowardly creatures who could not endure liberty or face the truth, and must be ruled over and systematically deceived by others who were stronger than themselves. That the choice for mankind lay between freedom and happiness, and that for the great bulk of mankind, happiness was better. That the party was the eternal guardian of the weak, a dedicated sect doing evil that good might come, sacrificing its own happiness to that of others. The terrible thing, thought Winston, the terrible thing, was that when O'Brien said this, he would believe it. You could see it in his face. O'Brien knew everything. A thousand times better than Winston, he knew what the world was really like, in what degradation the mass of human beings lived, and by what lies and barbarities the party kept them there. He had understood it all, weighed it all, and it made no difference. All was justified by the ultimate purpose. What can you do, thought Winston, against the lunatic who is more intelligent than yourself, who gives your arguments a fair hearing, and then simply persists in his lunacy?
You are ruling over us for our own good, he said feebly. You believe that human beings are not fit to govern themselves, and therefore... He started and almost cried out. A pang of pain had shot through his body. O'Brien had pushed the lever of the dial up to thirty-five.
That was stupid, Winston, stupid, he said. You should know better than to say a thing like that. He pulled the lever back and continued. Now I will tell you the answer to my question. It is this. The party seeks power entirely for its own sake. We are not interested in the good of others. We are interested solely in power. Not wealth, or luxury, or long life, or happiness, only power, pure power. What pure power means, you will understand presently. We are different from all the oligarchies of the past in that we know what we are doing. All the others, even those who resembled ourselves, were cowards and hypocrites. The German Nazis and the Russian communists came very close to us in their methods. But they never had the courage to recognize their own motives. They pretended, perhaps they even believed, that they had seized power unwillingly and for a limited time, and that just round the corner there lay a paradise where human beings would be free and equal. We are not like that. We know that no one ever seizes power with the intention of relinquishing it. Power is not a means. It is an end. One does not establish a dictatorship in order to safeguard a revolution. One makes the revolution in order to establish the dictatorship. The object of persecution is persecution. The object of torture is torture. The object of power is power. Now do you begin to understand me? Winston was struck, as he had been struck before, by the tiredness of O'Brien's face. It was strong and fleshy and brutal. It was full of intelligence and a sort of controlled passion before which he himself felt helpless. But it was tired. There were pouches under the eyes, the skin sagged from the cheekbones. O'Brien leaned over him, deliberately bringing the worn face nearer. You are thinking, he said, that my face is old and tired. You are thinking that I talk of power, and yet I am not even able to prevent the decay of my own body. Can you not understand, Winston, that the individual is only a cell? The weariness of the cell is the vigor of the organism. Do you die when you cut your fingernails? He turned away from the bed and began strolling up and down again, one hand in his pocket. We are the priests of power, he said. God is power. But at present, power is only a word so far as you are concerned. It is time for you to gather some idea of what power means. The first thing you must realize is that power is collective. The individual only has power insofar as he ceases to be an individual. You know the party slogan, "Freedom is slavery". Has it ever occurred to you that it is reversible? Slavery is freedom. Alone, free, the human being is always defeated. It must be so, because every human being is doomed to die, which is the greatest of all failures. But if he can make complete utter submission, if he can escape from his identity, if he can merge himself in the party so that he is the party, then he is all-powerful and immortal. The second thing for you to realize is that power is power over human beings. Over the body, but above all, over the mind. Power over matter, external reality as you would call it, is not important. Already, our control over matter is absolute. For a moment, Winston ignored the dial. He made a violent effort to raise himself into a sitting position, and merely succeeded in wrenching his body painfully. But how can you control matter, he burst out. You don't even control the climate or the law of gravity, and there are disease, pain, death. O'Brien silenced him by a movement of the hand. We control matter because we control the mind. Reality is inside the skull. You will learn by degrees, Winston. There is nothing that we could not do. Invisibility, levitation, anything. I could float off this floor like a soap bubble if I wished to. I do not wish to, because the party does not wish it. You must get rid of those nineteenth-century ideas about the laws of nature. We make the laws of nature.
But you do not. You are not even masters of this planet. What about Eurasia and East Asia? You have not conquered them yet.
Unimportant. We shall conquer them when it suits us, and if we did not, what difference would it make? We can shut them out of existence. Oceania is the world.
But the world itself is only a speck of dust, and man is tiny, helpless. How long has he been in existence? For millions of years, the Earth was uninhabited.
Nonsense. The Earth is as old as we are, no older. How could it be older? Nothing exists except through human consciousness.
But the rocks are full of the bones of extinct animals, mammoths and mastodons, and enormous reptiles which lived here long before man was ever heard of.
Have you ever seen those bones, Winston? Of course not. Nineteenth-century biologists invented them. Before man, there was nothing. After man, if he could come to an end, there would be nothing. Outside man, there is nothing.
But the whole universe is outside us. Look at the stars. Some of them are a million light-years away. They are out of our reach forever.
What are the stars, said O'Brien indifferently. They are bits of fire a few kilometers away. We could reach them if we wanted to, or we could blot them out. The Earth is the center of the universe. The sun and the stars go round it. Winston made another convulsive movement. This time, he did not say anything. O'Brien continued, as though answering a spoken objection. For certain purposes, of course. That is not true. When we navigate the ocean or when we predict an eclipse, we often find it convenient to assume that the Earth goes round the sun and that the stars are millions upon millions of kilometers away, but what of it? Do you suppose it is beyond us to produce a dual system of astronomy? The stars can be near or distant according as we need them. Do you suppose our mathematicians are unequal to that? Have you forgotten doublethink? Winston shrank back upon the bed. Whatever he said, the swift answer crushed him like a bludgeon. And yet he knew, he knew, that he was in the right. The belief that nothing exists outside your own mind, surely there must be some way of demonstrating that it was false. Had it not been exposed long ago as a fallacy? There was even a name for it, which he had forgotten. A faint smile twitched the corners of O'Brien's mouth as he looked down at him. I told you, Winston, he said, that metaphysics is not your strong point. The word you are trying to think of is solipsism. But you are mistaken. This is not solipsism. Collective solipsism, if you like, but that is a different thing. In fact, the opposite thing. All this is a digression, he added in a different tone. The real power, the power we have to fight for night and day, is not power over things, but over men. He paused, and for a moment assumed again his air of a schoolmaster questioning a promising pupil. How does one man assert his power over another, Winston? Winston thought.
By making him suffer, he said.
Exactly. By making him suffer. Obedience is not enough. Unless he is suffering, how can you be sure that he is obeying your will and not his own? Power is in inflicting pain and humiliation. Power is in tearing human minds to pieces and putting them together again in new shapes of your own choosing. Do you begin to see, then, what kind of world we are creating? It is the exact opposite of the stupid hedonistic utopias that the old reformers imagined. A world of fear and treachery and torment, a world of trampling and being trampled upon, a world which will grow not less but more merciless as it refines itself. Progress in our world will be progress toward more pain. The old civilizations claimed that they were founded on love and justice. Ours is founded upon hatred. In our world, there will be no emotions except fear, rage, triumph, and self-abasement. Everything else we shall destroy, everything. Already, we are breaking down the habits of thought which have survived from before the revolution. We have cut the links between child and parent, and between man and man, and between man and woman. No one dares trust a wife or a child or a friend any longer. But in the future, there will be no wives and no friends. Children will be taken from their mothers at birth, as one takes eggs from a hen. The sex instinct will be eradicated. Procreation will be an annual formality like the renewal of a ration card. We shall abolish the orgasm. Our neurologists are at work upon it now. There will be no loyalty except loyalty toward the party. There will be no love except the love of Big Brother. There will be no laughter except the laugh of triumph over a defeated enemy. There will be no arts, no literature, no science. When we are omnipotent, we shall have no more need of science. There will be no distinction between beauty and ugliness. There will be no curiosity, no employment of the process of life. All competing pleasures will be destroyed. But always do not forget this, Winston. Always there will be the intoxication of power, constantly increasing and constantly growing subtler. Always, at every moment, there will be the thrill of victory, the sensation of trampling on an enemy who is helpless. If you want a picture of the future, imagine a boot stamping on a human face forever. He paused, as though he expected Winston to speak. Winston had tried to shrink back into the surface of the bed again. He could not say anything. His heart seemed to be frozen. O'Brien went on. And remember that it is forever. The face will always be there to be stamped upon. The heretic, the enemy of society, will always be there, so that he can be defeated and humiliated over again. Everything that you have undergone since you have been in our hands, all that will continue and worse. The espionage, the betrayals, the arrests, the tortures, the executions, the disappearances will never cease. It will be a world of terror as much as a world of triumph. The more the party is powerful, the less it will be tolerant. The weaker the opposition, the tighter the despotism. Goldstein and his heresies will live forever. Every day, at every moment, they will be defeated, discredited, ridiculed, spat upon, and yet they will always survive. This drama that I have played out with you during seven years will be played out over and over again, generation after generation, always in subtler forms. Always, we shall have the heretic here at our mercy, screaming with pain, broken up, contemptible, and in the end utterly penitent, saved from himself, crawling to our feet of his own accord. That is the world that we are preparing, Winston. A world of victory after victory, triumph after triumph after triumph, and endless pressing, pressing, pressing upon the nerve of power. You are beginning, I can see, to realize what that world will be like. But in the end, you will do more than understand it. You will accept it, welcome it, become part of it. Winston had recovered himself sufficiently to speak.
You can't, he said weakly.
What do you mean by that remark, Winston?
You could not create such a world as you have just described. It is a dream. It is impossible.
Why?
It is impossible to found a civilization on fear and hatred and cruelty it would never endure.
Why not?
It would have no vitality. It would disintegrate. It would commit suicide.
Nonsense. You are under the impression that hatred is more exhausting than love. Why should it be? And if it were, what difference would that make? And if it were, what difference would that make? Suppose that we choose to wear ourselves out faster? Suppose that we quicken the tempo of human life till men are senile at thirty? Still, what difference would it make? Can you not understand that the death of the individual is not death? The party is immortal. As usual, the voice had battered Winston into helplessness. Moreover, he was in dread that if he persisted in his disagreement, O'Brien would twist the dial again. And yet he could not keep silent. Feeblely, without arguments, with nothing to support him except his inarticulate horror of what O'Brien had said, he returned to the attack. I don't know. I don't care. Somehow you will fail. Something will defeat you. Life will defeat you. We control life Winston, at all its levels. You are imagining that there is something called human nature which will be outraged by what we do and will turn against us. But we create human nature. Men are infinitely malleable, or perhaps you have returned to your old idea that the proletarians or the slaves will arise and overthrow us. Put it out of your mind. They are helpless, like the animals. Humanity is the party. The others are outside, irrelevant. I don't care. In the end, they will beat you. Sooner or later, they will see you for what you are, and then they will tear you to pieces. Do you see any evidence that this is happening? Or any reason why it should? No, I believe it. I know that you will fail. There is something in the universe, I don't know, some spirit, some principle, that you will never overcome. Do you believe in God Winston? No. Then what is it, this principle, that will defeat us? I don't know. The spirit of man. And do you consider yourself a man? Yes. If you are a man Winston, you are the last man. Your kind is extinct. We are the inheritors. Do you understand that you are alone? You are outside history. You are nonexistent. His manner changed, and he said more harshly. And you consider yourself morally superior to us with our lies and our cruelty? Yes, I consider myself superior. O'Brien did not speak. Two other voices were speaking. After a moment Winston recognized one of them as his own. It was a soundtrack of the conversation he had had with O'Brien on the night when he had enrolled himself in the Brotherhood. He heard himself promising to lie, to steal, to forge, to murder, to encourage drug-taking and prostitution, to disseminate venereal diseases, to throw vitriol in a child's face. O'Brien made a small impatient gesture as though to say that the demonstration was hardly worth making. Then he turned a switch, and the voices stopped. Get up from that bed, he said. The bonds had loosened themselves. Winston lowered himself to the floor and stood up unsteadily. You are the last man, said O'Brien. You are the guardian of the human spirit. You shall see yourself as you are. Take off your clothes. Winston undid the bit of string that held his overalls together. The zip fastener had long since been wrenched out of them. He could not remember whether at any time since his arrest he had taken off all his clothes at one time. Beneath the overalls, his body was looped with filthy yellowish rags, just recognizable as the remnants of underclothes. As he slid them to the ground, he saw that there was a three-sided mirror at the far end of the room. He approached it, then stopped short. An involuntary cry had broken out of him. Go on, said O'Brien. Stand between the wings of the mirror. You shall see the side view as well. He had stopped because he was frightened. A bowed gray-colored skeleton-like thing was coming toward him. Its actual appearance was frightening, and not merely the fact that he knew it to be himself. He moved closer to the glass. The creature's face seemed to be protruded because of its bent carriage. A forlorn jailbird's face with a knobby forehead running back into a bald scalp, a crooked nose and battered-looking cheekbones above which the eyes were fierce and watchful. The cheeks were seamed, the mouth had a drawn-in look. Certainly it was his own face, but it seemed to him that it had changed more than he had changed inside. The emotions it registered would be different from the ones he felt. He had gone partially bald. For the first moment, he had thought that he had gone gray as well, but it was only the scalp that was gray. Except for his hands and a circle of his face, his body was gray all over with ancient ingrained dirt. Here and there, under the dirt, there were the red scars of wounds, and near the ankle, the varicose ulcer was an inflamed mass with flakes of skin peeling off it. But the truly frightening thing was the emaciation of his body. The barrel of the ribs was as narrow as that of a skeleton. The legs had shrunk so that the knees were thicker than the thighs. He saw now what O'Brien had meant about seeing the side view. The curvature of the spine was astonishing. The thin shoulders were hunched forward so as to make a cavity of the chest. The scraggy neck seemed to be bending double under the weight of the skull. At a guess, he would have said that it was the body of a man of sixty, suffering from some malignant disease. You have thought sometimes, said O'Brien, that my face, the face of a member of the inner party, looks old and worn. What do you think of your own face? He seized Winston's shoulder and spun him round so that he was facing him. Look at the condition you are in, he said. Look at this filthy grime all over your body. Look at the dirt between your toes. Look at that disgusting running sore on your leg. Do you know that you stink like a goat? Probably you have ceased to notice it. Look at your emaciation. Do you see? I can make my thumb and forefinger meet around your bicep. I could snap your neck like a carrot. Do you know that you have lost twenty-five kilograms since you have been in our hands? Even your hair is coming out in handfuls. Look! He plucked at Winston's head and brought away a tuft of hair. Open your mouth. Nine, ten, eleven teeth left. How many had you when you came to us? And the few you have left are dropping out of your head. Look here! He seized one of Winston's remaining front teeth between his powerful thumb and forefinger. A twinge of pain shot through Winston's jaw. O'Brien had wrenched the loose tooth out by the roots. He tossed it across the cell. You are rotting away, he said. You are falling to pieces. What are you, a bag of filth? Now turn round and look into that mirror again. Do you see that thing facing you? That is the last man. If you are human, that is humanity. Now put your clothes on again. Winston began to dress himself, with slow stiff movements. Until now, he had not seemed to notice how thin and weak he was. Only one thought stirred in his mind, that he must have been in this place longer than he had imagined. Then suddenly, as he fixed the miserable rags round himself, a feeling of pity for his ruined body overcame him. Before he knew what he was doing, he had collapsed onto a small stool that stood beside the bed and burst into tears. He was aware of his ugliness, his gracelessness, a bundle of bones in filthy underclothes sitting weeping in the harsh white light, but he could not stop himself. O'Brien laid a hand on his shoulder, almost kindly. It will not last forever, he said. You can escape from it whenever you choose. Everything depends on yourself. You did it, sobbed Winston. You reduced me to this state. No Winston, you reduced yourself to it. This is what you accepted when you set yourself up against the party. It was all contained in that first act. Nothing has happened that you did not foresee. He paused and then went on. We have beaten you Winston. We have broken you up. You have seen what your body is like. Your mind is in the same state. I do not think there can be much pride left in you. You have been kicked and flogged and insulted. You have screamed with pain. You have rolled on the floor in your own blood and vomit. You have whimpered for mercy. You have betrayed everybody and everything. Can you think of a single degradation that has not happened to you? Winston had stopped weeping, though the tears were still oozing out of his eyes. He looked up at O'Brien. I have not betrayed Julia, he said. O'Brien looked down at him thoughtfully. No, he said. No, that is perfectly true. You have not betrayed Julia. The peculiar reverence for O'Brien, which nothing seemed able to destroy, flooded Winston's heart again. How intelligent, he thought. How intelligent. Never did O'Brien fail to understand what was said to him. Anyone else on earth would have answered promptly that he had betrayed Julia. For what was there that they had not screwed out of him under the torture? He had told them everything he knew about her, her habits, her character, her past life. He had confessed in the most trivial detail everything that had happened at their meetings, all that he had said to her and she to him, their black-market meals, their adulteries, their vague plottings against the party, everything. And yet, in the sense in which he intended the word, he had not betrayed her. He had not stopped loving her. His feeling toward her had remained the same. O'Brien had seen what he meant without the need for explanation. Tell me, he said, how soon will they shoot me? It might be a long time, said O'Brien. You are a difficult case, but don't give up hope. Everything is cured sooner or later. In the end, we shall shoot you.
Context of white supremacy. The number to dial is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. I will again encourage folks to not wait until the last minute, bottom of the hour, to decide that there's something you would like to share. The number one more time, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. Wow. That right there reminded me why this book is on my top five. You get, in my view, some really clear insight into what white people are all about, what the system of white supremacy really boils down to. That segment right there between O'Brien and Winston. Let's see, we have Shadow, our caller in Brooklyn. Your lines are open. If anybody else gets a hand up, I will add them to the line. Do y'all have anything you wanted to share?
I'll jump in. The, um, when O'Brien was going off on his rant, and then he was talking about, if you want to imagine a future, imagine a boot stomping on a, on a face forever. I'm sorry, it's just really intense, but I have, um, I was, when I lived in, I lived in Denver for several years, really quick, and I lived in a house with a bunch of white people that were, you know, loosely, they called themselves activists, and we did a lot of like different, it was, I'll share some other time, it was a pretty, pretty interesting experience. But, um, one person is like, what you call an intentional community, like, um, everybody knew each other, and we were all, you know, participating in these activities and stuff and community stuff. But there was one guy that, he was, he was, uh, he moved into the house, and he was pretty, whatever, cool white guy, whatever, like, nice, you know, you know, back then I used to be friends with white people, so I considered him, you know, pretty amiable, pretty nice guy and stuff. He was a musician, whatever, I think from Nebraska. He puts up a poster, right? I came home from work, and there was a poster that apparently he had put up in the house. This poster is a pic of the American troop, you know, all suited up, you know, with the big boots on, and one of his feet, um, you know, like a huge, you know, the whole poster is a, like, almost a life-size poster of this white guy, and his foot was on the face of a black African man, right? So I was, I see this poster, huge poster, the black dude's face under the boot of this, I get anything poster with some type of an anti-imperialism poster, I guess they're like, yeah, we're, we're anti-imperialist, you know? Um, if anyone's, yeah, so I was just like, uh, this poster needs to be taken down, like, immediately, and he's like, oh, well, you know, like, uh, you know, I guess he wanted to talk about, I guess, it was, I guess for them it wasn't like, I don't know, I was just like, if you don't take it down like right now, um, and that was kind of the beginning of me kind of distancing myself from white people. I just found that so shocking. And then I found, there was another house of our friends where I saw that poster up, and I wasn't going to take it down in someone else's house, but just, I guess that's a poster that these, um, so-called anarchist kids kind of have up in some places. It's supposed to be anti-imperialistic, but it's a black dude under the boot of a white, um, soldier.
Yeah, it's pretty, uh, it's almost what to say. I mean, it's, it's self-evident. Two and two is four, put on face forever. It's self, uh, it's self-evident. Nine three two five, you should be with us as well, nine three two five.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm joining in. A little late, uh, but I have a couple of things I wanted to bring out. Well, first of all, at first I felt this work was creative, but the more we get into it, it looks a lot like that he took a lot from Hitler, Stalin, uh, Lenin, uh, Lenin, and if you look at it, he just actually wrote this, this piece based upon these dictators and the, uh, the type governments or totalitarian type, um, situations that they created in their lives. And, I mean, it was enlightening to a certain point, but, you know, it was sort of disheartening because I thought he was original in a lot of his ideas, but it seemed that, you know, he just actually took it from these real-life characters that were, you know, creating all these atrocities during the nineteen, the, uh, nineteen forties and early fifties. And, you know, I started to look at the fact that, uh, Big Brother, you know, the pictures of Big Brother throughout the book had a strong resemblance to Stalin. Uh, the party's big enemy, Goldstein, resembled, uh, Leon Trosky, who was, uh, actually a protege of Stalin, but he was a Jewish fellow, and, you know, I think they had a fear of Jews during that particular time, and I read a little bit about, uh, Stalin and Trosky, you know, uh, you know, but I guess, you know, it probably wouldn't be good to go into right now, but, I mean, I think he was a protege of Stalin, and he ended up, uh, rebelling against Stalin, ended up killing him. You know, it's, it's not original, in other words, that's, that's what I'm saying. You know, the book originally was supposed to be entitled The Last Man, and I noticed in the last second, segment, that, uh, Winston, I mean, uh, O'Brien was referring to Winston as the last man, but they changed the title of the book, you know, to make it more appealing. And I can see where that all comes into play, but, you know, those are a couple of things that, that I noticed. I had some notes, but it was, uh, actually for the earlier section, session, I guess you guys may have covered that already.
We should have time, if you want to share notes on the earlier section that we covered today as well, we should have time to get that in. I'll double-check if, uh, Shadow, you should be with us. Shadow, you should be with us if you had anything you wanted to get in. Your line should be open as well. But, yeah, we should have time for that as well. Nine three two five. If you want to go back to touch on the earlier portion as well. Shadow, did you have anything you wanted to share? Take that as a no. Shadow, are you still with us? Or if you're listening, if you're just listening, that's fine, but your line should be open. Okay. Don't know if he said his mute button, or might just be listening. Either one of those should be fine. I did want to point out, I thought this was very important. When O'Brien says that he wrote the book that has been attributed to Goldstein, I thought that was a pretty significant reveal. Even though in this book, there's a lot of deception going on as well, but he could have lied. But I got the impression from reading it, hearing it again, that he was probably being truthful about that, that he gave it to him. So it seems to be that, it seems very likely that he was telling the truth there and saying he was, I guess, one of the co-authors. He was saying that nobody writes a book by themselves anymore. But did that stand out, that you all think that was significant? And I think, more importantly, does anything about that aspect of the story seem relevant to replacing white supremacy with justice?
Yes. I would, you know, like to interject this point. You know, since there's a lot of deception going on, and it was a lot of question-and-answer session going on, like we do, you know, when we're talking to suspected races, you know. And I'm wondering, if one of their tools is deception, then when we're asking questions from suspected races or admitted races, what gives us the impression that they would give us a true answer? Or whatever answer that they give us is actually what they really believe? If that's what they really believe, or it's what they want us to believe? And the same thing with Winston. He's asking questions of O'Brien, but he already knows that O'Brien is deceptive. So when he asks a question, O'Brien gives him an answer. How can he accept the answer that O'Brien gives him as the truth when O'Brien has been deceptive all along? So it's almost like, I mean, it's a question-and-answer session. And Winston, at this point, probably don't know what to believe, you know. And it's almost like the game is to totally confuse him so that he will not know what is up from down, or what is right or wrong. And then in the total confusion, you will believe anything that is injected at that point.
Yeah, I guess white people kind of occupy both sides of the argument. In the deception, I guess they gotta have all their bases covered. If, like he says, like, "The rule of the party is forever." Let that be the starting point. So then it's like, yeah, if you're talking to someone who is applying to that logic, then you know that everything that they're saying to you is kind of tactical. You know, they're not, you can't just deal with someone who's insane by speaking in the language of the insanity because you'll just drive yourself crazy. You have to kind of look at it, I guess, more practically. And Winston isn't, he doesn't really seem to have a basis in practicality. His basis seems to be kind of a... I don't know, like he said, that he and Julia, when he referred to their plans against the party, he called it vague. You know, they have this vague plan against the party. Like, that's what I'm saying, like, it seems like it's more... It seems easier for him to go with two plus two equals five than to go against it. But, yeah, I find it really interesting how he's talking about how previously the powers-that-be were just trying to stamp out opposition. And they had to learn how to refine their approach to power, as he said. And he said "power over," I love that. Because I had to underline that from last night, whenever we were speaking to that racist. Like, power is nothing unless it's power over people to harm them. There is no such thing as power. It's not like you can put power inside of your CD player and make it run off of, like, you know, mistreatment. What power is, is just harming people. So in the end, it's, you know, it's just a mistreatment. But they make it seem like it's a lot more complicated.
Um, I, yeah, this is eighteen oh four. And I, all I kept thinking about when he was telling Winston, you know, "You're a new man now. We've not just, we've kind of, it's like you're reborn now based on what we've done to you." And I just kept thinking about how, when we see people go in jail for like thirty, forty years, like Nelson Mandela, there's a purpose behind that. They're not just imprisoning the person, they're also remaking the person, literally. You know, probably not in every single case. But I think that's true in a lot of cases, especially for political prisoners. And I think that's something to ponder, what, you know, how they mind-control program people, especially politically active people when they have them in jail. So that gave me a whole new perspective about that.
Yes, that's a good point. Because I was thinking more closely to home. When you think about John Lewis or Bobby Rush, you know, they were fierce civil rights workers, you know, from the 60s and 70s. And then now, they're on Capitol Hill. And it's almost like, you know, I mean, John Lewis being spit on now, and nothing's happening. I mean, he don't do anything, he don't prosecute anybody. But, I mean, it's almost like the same thing when he was crossing the bridge, when they was beating him in the head. I mean, at some point, I mean, it seems like it would be a transition. I mean, something different would happen, you know. And then to listen to him talk now, it's almost like, I don't know. It's almost, it doesn't seem like the same person that was courageous in the 60s. That's what he's talking about now. It's almost like a sellout. But, I mean, it wouldn't be for me to say that he's selling out. I mean, but you're under a system of white supremacy. You would be able to reveal more truth at this point. But at the position that you're in, if you're on Capitol Hill, now you're almost compromised. You can't reveal any truth at this point.
Again, I do make an effort watching the anti-blackness this year. I would caution non-white people about using that term "sellout." I have concluded, if you are subject to racist man, racist woman, racist child, you have already sold out, you have been compromised. If you are a victim of white supremacy. A flat statement, either that's true or it's not true. And kind of to pick on both of the points, kind of tying them together. What the caller in Brooklyn, I think, has said a couple of times on this program that he's saying with Winston, it seems like it's easier for Winston to just go with, "All right, two and two is five." It is for non-white people. The easy thing to do is just go with what racist man, racist woman, racist child have laid out. That is the easy thing to do. To not make an effort to go against them, to not be John Lewis out on Pats Bridge, getting beat upside the head with a nightstick when no one is prosecuted. That is very difficult. Anything could happen going that route. You will most likely be by yourself, as Winston is. You're not going to have a gang to protect you. You're not going to have an entourage to be with you so you don't have to feel frightened and alone and cowardice by yourself, as is demonstrated in the book. Where you've got the different prisoners when they're in greater confinement, where they're ratting on each other. "Take him, don't take me." He was saying all kinds of stuff a minute ago. "Don't take me to room 101." The same thing plays out when you're in a weak position, when you have been compromised, where someone or a group of people are dominant over you. The easy thing to do, they make it the safe thing to do, is to just go along with what they say. And I think with John Lewis, and I think even in this book, it demonstrates, to maintain that, where I'm going to oppose this injustice system and keep that up even in the face of massive resistance, even when I am physically abused for this, even when I'm attacked because of this, when I'm deprived of constructive resources, when I'm mistreated in all kinds of ways. It is very difficult to persevere in the face of that. And you have a lot of non-white people who have worked against a system of injustice. The same thing with Winston, even though it's in a shorter period of time, where he's withering away. I think that happens to a lot of non-white people, whether they end up being political prisoners, Nelson Mandela, Geronimo Pratt, long list of folks, just being worn out. In fact, I remember the documentary film, "Power to the People." It's on the Coindale Program against black people in the 60s and 70s who were working against racism. And it says, "A lot of those people were just like post-traumatic stress syndrome, that they simply had lost their mind. They had lost their ability to think clearly and to function clearly." They said that these people seemed like combat veterans who were just in a total daze because of everything that white people dumped on them and the way they were terrorized as a result of their efforts. So it's not surprising at all. I see a lot of parallels between the way Winston ends up being after all of this abuse and terrorism, where he's lost his hair and he's gray and pale and all sickly and emaciated. And a lot of non-white people who do make an effort to combat racism, white supremacy, and just the toll that it takes on you, making an effort to combat a superior force that is white people. But I could be wrong. You all can let me know if that makes sense.
No, that's an excellent point.
But I'm not sure what, I mean, I'm not sure how what I said is going against what you're saying. I think they're actually complimentary. I'm saying that it's precisely to obtain that result that all of that terrorism is done. And I think, and specifically when people are jailed for like thirty, forty years at a time, it sounds like it's like a big, long mind-control experiment where they're literally trying to program the person into being the opposite of what they came in as.
Oh, yeah, I didn't disagree with that. I didn't disagree with that at all. I was just, I think that happens to people who are in greater confinement and to people that are not in greater confinement. I think white people do a lot of the same things to achieve that same result where you end up with a totally different person after they have put some time working on you.
He says, I read down some notes, he says, "The dead will not rise up against us." Where he's talking about like, how in previous times, people who would become martyrs, you know, who would die for their causes, would cause shame, you know, to the ruling parties. And the victory belonged to the victims. And he's calling Winston "a flaw in the pattern, a stain that must be corrected," or whatever. He says, "We don't destroy, we convert." You know, so it's like they have to make an example out of people. They have to make an example. Like we were saying, the decrees used to be about what people should do, what people could do. Now it's about what people are. So it's like they have to, it's like, I guess, they're just taking it to this ultimate extreme where they just tell you what you are, and that becomes reality. Because that's, like the guest last night, how she's, I don't need to go deep, but just, white people call the shots. And then those shots become reality because they say they are. So then they have to make you into like the embodiment of... They have to make it hurt. They have to make it evident that you shouldn't go against them and make you a testament to their power. But if you go against common sense, though, because two plus two happens to be four, so...
Before we move to any other aspects people wanted to touch on, just on the book aspect. Again, I think there is a lot of background. Check some of the background noise really quick. Just with the book aspect, where O'Brien says that he's one of the co-authors of the book that's supposed to be from the Brotherhood. That's, you know, these are the people that are supposed to be working against the party in Big Brother. When he says that he co-wrote this book, I think that's definitely something that non-white people should keep in mind under the system of racism, white supremacy. I think that is the purpose of a lot of these white people who say that they are against racism, white supremacy. I think is the very same tactic. We will put out the idea, the message, the belief that these are white people, these are books, these are ideas that white people are putting forward to work against racism, white supremacy. Non-white people pick that up and think, "Yeah, this is something I'm reading." "White Like Me" by Timothy Wise, or Dr. Peggy McIntosh, and "White Privilege" and "The Invisible Knapsack." Yes, this will help dismantle racism, white supremacy. And nothing could be further from the truth. White people are still in charge. And they are just giving you a refined, different program of how you should function as a victim. And you'll be, you will still be being led by white people. Even as you move, thinking that you're moving to work against the system, you are still functioning to support the system. And they are controlling the way that you think, the way that you behave. I think that's something that is real important that should be thought about. And it doesn't even have to be a white person. I would say this could be done even with them showcasing a non-white person as the author of the text. They could pick out any black person, say, "Yeah, this black person wrote this book, and it's supposed to be great work against racism." And has nothing but ideas that will further entrench the system, ideas that will not do anything to constructively neutralize what white people are doing to stomp on us worldwide. I think that's something that should definitely be thought about, remembered. I think it's already been brought up, when you're talking to white people, they're very deceptive. I think that's something that should be in the forefront of our minds, even when white people reveal information that sounds like it could be accurate or they share information that is something that we want to believe or sounds pleasing to us. That should still be there, that, hey, deception, primary tactic. Evaluate it, think about it, ponder on it some more. Continually check, even after some time has passed, to see if that is really accurate, is what they said really truthful. Because white people, they have a myriad of ways of practicing deception and keeping non-white people confused. So just wanted to make sure I touched on that before we moved forward. I know nine three two five, you said you had some comments on portions that are earlier in the book. And the other folks that are with us, caller in Brooklyn, Shadow, eighteen oh four. If you all had other things you wanted to touch on, feel free as well.
Okay. Winston, I had noted that he had felt, he had a false sense of security in the room above Mr. Charnton's shop, and also in O'Brien's presence. And that false sense of security soon turned into horror and fear that was so engrossed. He only forgot about his own situation or his own neck when others was brought into the cell as prisoners. That was Ample Fort, who was a poet whose crime was only leaving out a word in a translation of a Kipling of all people's translation. a, a translation of a Kipling of all people's translation, which Kipling is a suspect racist. I also, uh, noted that the party prisoners reacted differently from the so-called ordinary criminals. The ordinary criminals' reactions were similar to non-whites in this area of the planet when they were, uh, were act, boisterous, uh, you know, uh, aggressive. And the party members were mostly, uh, solid and subdued under the same circumstances. And another point, um, when the, there was a woman brought into the cell that had the same last name as Winston, as Smith, and I thought it was interesting that, you know, uh, when the suggestion was made that she may have been his mother, but early in the book, he described his mother as tall, statuesque, rather solid woman with magnificent fair hair. But this woman that came into the cell was an enormous wreck of a woman with great tumbling breasts and thick curls of white hair, kicking and shouting. Everything that was completely opposite of the way that he remembered his mother to be, but yet still, he accepted the suggestion that she could possibly be his mother. I thought that, you know, was quite revealing. And he even added in that after twenty years of being in a forced labor camp, then maybe that could be his mother. And, I don't know, it just, it seemed, you know, pretty revealing that some woman that was the exact opposite of what he felt that his mother would be, that he would accept, you know, the fact that that could be his mother. It's like he was sort of reaching for some type of, uh, comfort while he was in his, uh, uh, state of fear.
Caller, sorry to interrupt, can you speak up?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, can I be heard? Did, uh, did you get all that about his mother?
I could hear that, I'm not sure if, uh, if listeners could, but I could hear that clearly. Did, uh, I guess the folks on the line, could you all hear what he was saying?
Yeah, I got it, it's a little bit low, but, yeah.
Okay. And the last part is just the color symbolism, uh, when he was describing the, uh, chinless man, uh, the dark blood oozing from his mouth and nose, um, and one side of his face was darkening, you know, everything that was negative associated with darkness. Uh, his mouth was swollen into a cherry-colored mass with a black hole in the middle, you know, it's, uh, associating dark and black with negative. Um, I think that, uh, I think that's how it comes, uh, yeah. Let's see. Oh, one other thing, uh, concerning the, um, the fact that religion was used to control that, the, the mention of God in there related to religion, and religion being used to control the minds of the masses, and the fact that Winston, uh, thought that the razor blade would be sm- smuggled into him, you know, brought on similarities of the maximum emergency compensatory action, to the point that, you know, what he would do with the razor blade, if he would use the razor blade in his defense, you know, to take out a few people, or whether he would just use the razor blade on himself, to just take himself out of a situation that could be, you know, uh, painful. And that, that tells, thank you for the time.
Yeah, about five minutes left in the program, uh, with regards to the caller, he just touched on, uh, the confusion where Winston is looking at this woman that they've thrown in, uh, his area of confinement, and he says, "Oh, well, maybe this is my mom, she has the same last name as I do." Um, to me, it, it reminded me of the temporal dislocation in the book, where Winston, and it seems many of the other, uh, folks who've been detained or what have you, where they don't have an understanding of time, like that seems to be popping up over and over throughout the book, where people aren't even really sure of the time, uh, whether it's the time of the day or the exact year, um, that there's, the confusion is so rife, uh, that they don't really have certainty of anything, even of, you know, this stranger on the street could be my mom, who knows? Um, and I, I see a lot of that with regards to non-white people as well, where you become so disoriented about everything, uh, both because, uh, white people are lying so much, uh, but also because you're being denied, uh, constructive information, that it just becomes, uh, a very debilitating environment in which to function, uh, where you just don't have certainty about anything, uh, who you are, what's going on, your relationship to the other people that you are in contact with, even what time of day it is, uh, you just don't, don't have any information about anything. Uh, and of course, the people that are most powerful, those end up being the people that you have to go to to try to get some sort of bearings about what's happening on the planet, and, uh, just very much reminds me of the position that non-white people are in, under the system of racism, white supremacy, just having that total confusion, lack of clarity around, uh, almost everything. Um, and this one sentence, uh, it, I got a good chuckle when he says, uh, Winston, he says, "What can you do, thought Winston, against the lunatic who is more intelligent than yourself, who gives your arguments a fair hearing and then simply persists in his lunacy?" I had a grand laugh, I have had that exact feeling many, 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 many times, talking to white people. Uh, I would say, maybe not more intelligent, but maybe more skilled with words, and/or they have more power than you, where they're in a position where they can inflict some sort of damage on you, physical or otherwise, where they're saying things that are not true, or don't make sense, uh, but you don't have the ability, or you don't have the words to accurately reveal the incorrectness of what it is that they're saying or doing, but I could definitely empathize with that, that sentence, uh, from Winston there. I'll mute my line if anybody, anything they want to get in the last, uh, couple minutes, three, four minutes before we wrap things up.
Um, one thing that stood out to me was how, um, it, it was touched on before, um, when, when Winston was reading the, uh, uh, his, his, uh, code book, you know, the, which turns out to be fake, or, or, you know, planted, but, um, where he's about to get to the meat, uh, he's, he's like, in mid-sentence, he stops, where he's about to get to like, "Why are they doing this?" And he stops right before, like in mid-sentence, and then, um, uh, here, O'Brien's talking to Winston about saying, in his diary, he was, um, saying that he understands how, but he doesn't understand why. It's like, you understand how to continue the system of white racism, but you don't know why, um, and, and the reason why, I would say, is to, you know, is to victimize non-white people, but, I mean, if you would say that, then that would, that would be obviously incorrect, and, you know, it would be like kind of exposing the, uh, soft, um, you know, exposing something that was vulnerable to attack, so I feel like that's like the, the, uh, kind of unspoken thing that's kind of like, uh, I guess why the book is so interesting, in that they don't, they never touch on the thing, you know, never touch on the why part. They, they can tell you how all day, but why? That, that'll remain a mystery until it, it, it stops happening, so I found that interesting.
Um, this is eighteen oh four, the last comment I wanted to make was that I, as I was listening to Winston kind of discover the extent to which, um, the party runs the world and getting these lessons from O'Brien, I couldn't help but think, here it is, um, he's lived in this system under the party all his life, uh, he's even been part of it, uh, it sounds like he was one of, you know, he wasn't, he was definitely not a pro, and here it is, it's at this very late stage, or I guess in, in midlife, I, I don't remember exactly what his age was, that he's finding out the fundamentals about the party, which is what O'Brien's teaching him, and the degree to which they, they feel like they will always control everything, that they even control the opposition, et cetera, et cetera. And I just thought, that's just so amazing, that he could be so, he, he's part of something, and yet so much of it is compartmentalized to it, to him, and he ends up going through this whole process of, um, torture to kind of have everything, it's not that he didn't know everything unconsciously before, but like, to have everything spelled out to him only happens when he's like thirty or forty, or whatever age he is, and I just find that kind of interesting.
Kind of like the kiss of death, like, like mafia, they're like kiss you on the cheek before they shoot you, I guess.
Well, but it, it's not just that, it's also that, um, I mean, this is something he's part of, you see what I'm saying, like, he's part of this thing, and, um, it, to me, it's kind of like, some of us can go through like a whole life and not really understand what system we live under, it's the same thing. Um, and, uh, because everything is, because there's so much deceit built in. So, anyway, I, I don't know if anybody else is kind of musing about the same thing.
Well, I, I follow that also, but also in the book it said, "O'Brien told Winston that, you know these things, Winston, you knew them all the time." And Winston even admitted that he knew a lot of those things. So it's almost like he was the ultimate form of disrespect when he was lying to himself. He knew the things, but he was also lying to himself.
Well, that makes me wonder, if the whole point why the book is written is not so that these things can be spelled out for people who are part of the, because of the global system of white supremacy, it's like they're not gonna tell them straight up, I mean, in, in this refined stage, you're not gonna tell them these things straight up, but then they'll put it in the book in the voice of an O'Brien. You know, I mean, it sounds like Nineteen Eighty Four itself, for all that, for all the lip service that a lot of the, um, the truth movement, white people are out there paid to it, it sounds like the book itself is, is a false flag operation, where ultimately they're just supposed to learn exactly the, the degree to which, um, they should be what they are in their system.
That is three hours, we have done our diligence, we will wrap things up next week. Folks can be thinking of final thoughts on the book, major points, I think there's some other interesting things will happen, uh, the final session next week, Julia will return, we'll see what's been happening with her, she was also captured in greater confinement. Uh, Winston will have another session with O'Brien, uh, some final things will be wrapped up, uh, next week, be interesting, dial in, seven PM Eastern, four PM Pacific, next Friday evening, uh, final session for Nineteen Eighty Four. Uh, I think Winston, when he was reading, uh, the Goldstein book, uh, I think he said when he was reading that as well, that he already knew a lot of this information that was being shared, it just was using different words and what have you. I think I've heard that several times from different non-white people, when they've read Mr. Fuller's work, or some of the publications from Trojan Horse, that seemed like they already knew a lot of this stuff, it was just being presented, uh, in a different format with different words, or given, uh, maybe a different way of describing things that they already knew, things that they already understood. But we can chat about all that next Friday. Thanks, everybody, for joining in, I hope it was a constructive investment of your Friday evening. We'll be back tomorrow, compensatory call-in, nine PM Eastern, eight PM Central, six PM Pacific. Uh, there are now international access numbers, uh, that you can dial, uh, if you would like to participate. Uh, I know we have people who call in from Canada, Japan, uh, some of the other spots on the globe, uh, if you're in at least those two areas of the world, Canada and Japan, they have different access numbers, it might even be, it looks like it would be local, uh, for the numbers that they have up, so if you're in those areas of the world, you can let me know, I can give you those numbers, and you can dial in, uh, for the program, uh, maybe even with a local call. We'll be back tomorrow evening. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in, replace white supremacy with justice as soon as possible. Cows signing out.
I'm a victim, brother.
No problem, you're a victim.
I'm a victim of four hundred years of conditioning.
Shut up.
The man has programmed my conditioning. Even my conditioning has been conditioned.